The Lord Mayor and team, when they just entered office, they were very concerned with the health and environmental situation in the city. But they didn't know that there are some very, very serious challenges in terms of getting the council to be in a position to be able to deal with the health and environmental issues of the capital. Finance, of course, was a very major component. And also, of course, the labor force, because the labor force was inherited one since for the time of S. S. C. Z. and Sos, brought back to the city council for all these years. But I'm glad today, as a result of getting down to work, we have been at this level today to heavily reduce the incidences of garbage, negatives within the city at least. But I have to say, if you have combat leaders who are coming to work with us and are being very open-minded, are being active, are ready to listen, are ready to dialogue with those who are supposed to give a very good service delivery, is the result of what we are seeing here today.
All this should allow the cleaning service to now transform into a proper waste management service, which has always been one of the key intended outcomes of the project. Transforming from cleaning service to managing waste, as you can see, the waste bins have different colors and these can be used to collect different types of waste.
In order to improve the living standards of residents and curb the impact of climate change for a city that occasionally experiences disasters such as flooding and windstorm?
They were much nicer than they were before. It was very, it was very prompt and definitely... Definitely, because new address owner, she looks so tired, but just look at it, the first response so quickly. Definitely, new mom look different now from what I said. You go see a girl, you go Santa. Definitely, come appreciate me.
In their drive to strengthen security and actualizing the infamous City of Light mantra, BCC in October last year launched the Banjo Lighting Project. This important project is expected to cover the entire city. For the council and residents of Banjo, the installation of these LED lights couldn't be timely.
So we said to our women right now, we get to get a lamp here. We get advanced in you. Women, you get to get a tobacco root. Even though tobacco root is a bit old, the advanced in you. Tobacco root, soon am not used to it, you learn by the note, learn somewhere central. So no longer advanced to them, but as I...
Capacity building and job creation opportunities remains at the heart of council's development agenda. Thus did recruitment of over forty young people into council's security branch. Thirty-six young people, including councillors and council staff, benefited from a capacity building program in China, where some of them studied international relations among other things.
Capacity building also is part of the EU project. So from time to time, when you have a council or city doing training, you get trained staffs, you hear EU project, you know, from many you know now, it's a team, a harmony, that call, you know, human strategy.
Banjo City Council also is an institution that is giving young people the opportunity to come for internship, to have the experience. And even at the end of the day, most of the time, most of them are given the opportunity to continue serving the institution based on their performance.
The project also has forced up not so few staffs when intent to capacitize them to be able to deliver efficient services to the council.
Widely known and revered for philanthropic gestures and women advocacy activities, the country's first female mayor drew her Rahim Malik Low Women and Girls Empowerment Initiative, launched a ten-million-dollar scheme for women of Banjo. This is to enable them venture into business and other endeavors that ensure economic growth and security. One councillor, whose ward benefitted from this scheme, has been to SM charity, councillor for Kampama Ward, Banjo Note. Like the Lord Mayor, she is also the only elected female councillor in the current administration.
We also have constructed storage facilities at the ice plant for women, which is also ongoing and it will be ready very soon.
Bearing in mind one of its prime objectives of instituting requisite physical and systemic sustainable infrastructure, the BCC in its drive to complement government's ongoing infrastructural endeavors, especially in its resolve to enhance movement of residents, spearheaded the construction of four main halls in streets such as Pill Street, Hadington and Dwangoro. Council is also looking forward to moving into this new complex that is near completion, a great feat that previous administrations can only admire.
When it comes to infrastructure, the Banjo City Council under the leadership of Mayor Raimaral Maliflu, as you can see, we have the BCC complex, which is fully known.
So currently, we started construction in 2018 and for the Banjo City Council, because it doesn't really match their ambition that they have. They have a structure here, but they wanted us to upgrade and do something that is very up-to-date and modern for the nation. We have some sort of different aspects of it. We have the building itself here and within the building we also have some other aspects that we decided to donate as a company to the BCC. For example, that is this fountain that we have here, including the landscaping. And when you go inside, you actually see some doors. Now, within the bill of warranty, there were only metal doors, but we felt that a building of this caliber should have some more beautiful foliage in it. So we decided to come with a lot of timber doors along the offices. So there are about twenty-five going up to thirty offices that we really have here, including the main hall that they have there for their little organizations and stuff going on. So basically, that's what we have in this. We have about twenty-five going up to thirty, and that is even ignoring the halls that we have, because there are a lot of open plants here. So when you put it together, we might go up to thirty-four or thirty-five offices, which will be able to house not just the mayor, but other city councils and all of their councillors here.
Activities, plans are already in place to digitalize the tax collection system.
The good governance will assist Banjo City Council for a more elaborate and dynamic resolution for management, staff, resources, dealing with policies, dealing with financial management through IT technology. And they have to have an IT policy as well to strengthen the organization.
So when I came, first thing that I told them was data is paramount, data is central. We need data to do whatever we're doing. Simply the tip, we bought enough computers to make sure whoever is in the game revenue gathering on internet is given a computer. Anybody whose role demands for you to have a laptop or a computer, I just thought I was providing. So today, I'll take off a button, you know what is happening on a daily, weekly, monthly and quarterly basis.
For a city so rich in culture and history, Banjo remains a shining example of how a people bound by a common objective can strive and achieve enviable development and that despite our religious and political orientations, we are one people with a common desire. Under the visionary leadership of her worship, Lord Mayor Rahim Malik Low, BCC has also registered enviable success in gathering revenue for the city's development projects. Known for her uncompromising stance against inefficiency, the Lord Mayor spearheaded a series of institutional reform programs, including the institution of a robust financial system. And terms to her personal intervention, BCC is perhaps the only debt-free council in the country, having paid off all arrears.
I can say here that, I can say here that we've graduated to a point that the council, Banjo City Council, today is debt-free. And on a daily basis, we look at our bank balances and we have what we call daily banking in all, in all revenue outlets of council. When I came, I introduced that whatever is coming to council is banked on a daily basis. So all the carriers, wherever they are, they bank into our revenue account and it's one account that all the servants are banned.
The challenges has been diminished, there is improvement in compliance and you know, non-compliance is a major factor that affects most departments. If the level of compliance improve significantly, IT and value will be added.
As strong advocate for women and youth empowerment, Mayor Low uses her powerful voice to advocate for gender equality. As president of Rafela Gambia chapter, authored in several advocacy programs to support women in politics and other endeavors, such as local and national decision-making processes.
Rafela, I am the president of Rafela. For the first time in the history of Gambia, Rafela was functional in the Gambia. Functional, the indie-dara, the death-dara, Nini loko gis. So Rafela, for example, if you don't have an elected local, elected local official, you don't do you them.
For the BCC management, serving the people of Banjo remains at the heart of their development agenda. Banjo, a city of tolerance, diversity and Gambia's historic citadel.
Yes, hello. Yes, hello, hello.
Hello, Salaam alaikum. Salaam alaikum wa samjat, salaam alaikum wa banjul. Go dig in Maganda. Minge no you kifaii fithe woyep. Council woyi, chat ba chat minge no no you, gumali me damai banjujum, terum matal. Why CEO mungfi, ah kilifaii chidekabi nyungfi, why ndaw yinga hamne nyone kachimburum tagadiarum, sutusun burin nyungfi. Ah taskati hebari anfi, teibes boh hamne lo nyunko yoye town hall meeting. Town hall meeting na krenya musun ko gis. Why meyo buyuna tabe teklachi bofu dekabi, dangawa warlo agwa dekabi, di tahau di len wah lingen lingla sasorn, langa char dep, ak langa chayi ne kontine, buko de fe, ni nyonyo lajla. Buylala di enak ngatahautontu len. Tejemadi ga hamne moy meyo of Banjo, nyemenali moy def lol, digen latubarkala. Modol digen yo hamne bamtokebe teinyunge egis, mugi tahau chibunto yo hamne musun ko fe egis, yana yala laugh chat. Konwa BCC yep, kuma seko besi si o besi susu, ngache ngalama, security bangi fi komesa na diadu, saliga irapetna. Konna nyohusti di jatae bedilen won ne program bi, den buga nyebnyo utok. Hamga degna, ak fokna, ak nyune, di lam lamme baku tereu, da yax reu. Lega hamne moy dohan reu, moy taskati hebari, lehe u nyuge neko u oneko, ko amlo ilaj, hana olof ne nan tumune duteu nyu inatal. Ko amlo ilaj nganiyong laj, ajara turo Rahim Malik Low. Menge hamne moy digen nyelvekune kameyo of Banjo, moy president for Rafela, the Gambia National Chapter, guest to defma coordinator Rafela, my rapid look on nachmum diget.
Kon nyunglena koonge, gienasi, ajara turo Rahim Malik Low, gienyo, ayun kota kam, sikopse guewa, da fa imen neda nyu iwaneyu, why rayo lin kota kar, gueketei, zutna fuka dala kar, lol liyepi, wo mey moe. Piti blae, zunoe giesa ra, ya gila koyo, zunla koyo.
Biti ble, si yo ye ke sa ra, ya di la ko yo, you na ku yo, na dey la bofa, you na ku ta ka, da da amto. Why dey na koye jo, da da ga, nek di gen jo hamne, da da de flo, hamne musun kofe de. Kon roho, mo fi de, di de, hamne, wo ni de fu ni ko fe, ka ku, ku is, na 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 bo. Li la yala deba, kon you le di nyaa, ku di kote, li du politi, ku li le, le li du politi. Se no wa sohla, mayor Banjul, du mayor pa se mi, du mayor pa se fe le. Di gen, ye ne, lo le si pa se mi ni, negan ye ne, lo le si pa se mi ni, mayor be, mayor ye bra. Mayor ni mo ti malay, suwa banbo, se to na yo ko sami kata, wa la yo ko tahawal. Su jamono politi di, di te, na ni ni politi, why bu jamono ligey di te, na ni ni ligey. Bu di politi size, ligey yo, hamne, andu ta politi, kon town hall meeting, to play no politi. Town hall meeting, BCC, ya fanda uko di EU project, yo ko fiti ni, ku le ren ni ni. Bamme yo so gebe tey, bamme yo mo fi musa di geni, toxi me ra di len, la ye na toh le. Bu dey amna, ye la ma fa na amu. Kon mu, indi na li, di na yo way transparency, transparency, mo chi lo nek, na ye le di di ke. Kon ye noa Banjul, yo len gen toki, toki bi, la di kek imite son, yo len gen toki, mu wa le, la le di geni, di gen ko fiti gebe tey. Yo len gen toki, mu wa le, la le bu de li geni, why yo len gen toki, sutu di gen, sutu di geni. So la na li, so la na la, so la na li, so la na la, mayor Banjul, ye yo wa sohla. Why di gen toki, di la, mu ma toki di wa, wo toki di wa, kenin toki di wa, la la warona, am kenin di re yo ko. Kon you, da yo ra, baye ye ne, ye ne poti si di bofa, Banjul, you ye fe yo ko bo. De len wa me, talal na len you, rohi Malik Lo, break na barri, iti ending, limfe de, ken si ko fe le. Kon you len me ke, de len, kanta, ye na se le ye no, ye na mo sohla. Kofu la, ema ku pa chaka, Salaam alaikum.
Okay, as you know, like I said earlier, uh, but it's part of the good government, it's for better service to be had out for the. By the city council, it's really important, my date and other, I mean, actually, it's a community. The one, everyone, yeah, and of course, by the, yeah, this is the custom by the project, for the by the, oh, yeah. Of course, of course, it's, 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 it's a given, it's one hundred and thirty two towns at the last. One fifty two million last, and of course, the last part of this activity. It's five, it's five, and of course, the first component which happens to me, and the good governance. Which is better service to be, and as wonderful, so, for the project question, for the mission, for Banjul. And then by the mayor, of the five, of the four, of the four. It's that, it's that, actually, it's, by the, it's that, for Banjul.
And councillors within Banjul, and that training catered for ward development committees, youths in Banjul, women groups, and of course, the cultural groups and religious leaders. Still under the same good governance component of the project, it focuses on the digitalization of Banjul City Council. Of course, it has a new building and with the aim of digitalizing Banjul City Council. And on component number two, which is of course, waste management. In terms of waste management, the project has purchased five thousand seven hundred waste bins to promote recycle, recover and reuse for Banjul City Council. And it has distributed the first pilot of the project to residents of Banjul. And as well as but, um, two, two trucks, one skip and two compact trucks for Banjul City Council as well. To ensure that there is effective service delivery within Banjul in terms of waste collection for Banjul City Council. And the project doesn't stop there, it catered for waste mani, um, cleansing service staff, which it caters for PPE, which is protective wares, what they wear during their delivery of service. And as well as the project is going to focus on the demarcation and the fences, and fencing of the dump site at the sanitarium. Moving on with the project, we still look into component number three. And of course, component number three is the rehabilitation of the former Crab Island Upper Basic School. The former Crab Island Upper Basic School would be transformed into a vocational skills center with eight classrooms. And of course, Radio Banjul and State of the Art Theater and Hall, which would also future women who are into businesses, small businesses, where they will be trained on soap making and bricat making in partnership with Women Initiative Gambia, known as WEEK, and for the youths would be trained on solar installation and steel with Crab Island, which will promote more empowerment for the youths of Banjul, would have Radio Banjul. And of course, a State of the Art Hall and a Music and Art Academy, where youths of Banjul would be trained on music production and how to play instruments. And still under the same Crab Island component, we are still looking into how to promote women and business initiatives by having a bicycle, bicycle repair at Crab Island. And of course, as I speak to you, Crab Island is currently under, the main hall is under demolition for reconstruction. And of course, some of the classrooms are under renovations. Still on the same project, on component number four, which focuses on greening Banjul. The greening Banjul is actually so far one of the most talked about activities of the project, which focuses on greening the inner city of Banjul, rehabilitating the Tanbi wetland and planting trees across the coastal line of Banjul. And in terms of planting trees in the coastal line of Banjul, the project has actually planted more than four thousand five hundred coconut trees along the coastal line of Banjul, from the fence of State House down to ABC, where the Christian Cemetery is. And moving on, at one thousand other different species will be planted at the beach as well. And of course, what makes our project unique is that it has a staff of over forty personnel who are gardeners and security personnel to ensure that there is protection of the garden, of the trees that are planted. And of course, they have a routine where they daily, the gardeners water and take care of the coconuts, the coconut plants, and of course, all the trees planted. And of course, the project has established water tanks and running water for the beach. So it ensures that it is well sustained and protected. Moving on to the same greening of the inner city. In the areas of greening the inner city, the project is in partnership with Doc Banjul, known as Development Oriented Citizens, and Ward Development Committees that are headed by the councillors of Banjul City Council. And this team is the team that is responsible for planting trees within Banjul City Council. We started with the Jolof Town Ward, who have planted more than two hundred and seventy trees. And of course, it also has a team that is responsible for watering and caring of these trees. And of course, just last week, we continued with the schools in Banjul, where we've planted with Albion Low Basic School, Saint Joseph Basic Cycle, Saint Joseph's Upper Basic School, and Campuma Primary, where we planted another set of more than three hundred trees within the inner city of Banjul. And we expect to continue planting trees as well. In terms of the greening, we look at the greening in Attard area, which is the rehabilitation and the restoration of the Tanbi wetland. We all know the history attached to the Tanbi wetland in Banjul, which is also demarcated as a national park. It is demarcated and gazetted as a national park in two thousand and eight. And of course, is under the parks and wildlife in partnership with West Africa Bad Study Association. For we all know that, the Tanbi wetland is the number one bad watching spot in the Gambia, and therefore needs to be rehabilitated. And how are we rehabilitating the Tanbi wetland is, we are in partnership with West Africa Bad Study Association, known as WAPSA, the community of Ndangan, um, women's, the community of Hamza Baharaks that live around the Tanbi wetland. We have so far planted two sets of five thousand mangrove trees at the Tanbi wetland. And of course, we organize by monthly cleansing exercise at the Tanbi wetland to ensure that there is a rehabilitation, restoration and protection, and protection of that Tanbi wetland. So these are activities that are currently going on at the Tanbi wetland in terms of the greening of the inner city. And still in the same vein of the project, we conduct by monthly cleansing exercise under the greening of the inner city as well, where we make sure that we clean where we plant trees. And of course, that is why recently you will pay attention that the beach of Banjul is so beautiful, is so colorful, and of course, is actually one of the best places to be. And this is just our effort to ensure that we have the beautification bit of it. But most importantly is the climate change part of it. We're trying to ensure that there is enough protection of our environment. And we are also contributing our quota in terms of fighting the climate change in the Gambia. And how do we fight climate change is we plant trees and protect the trees. We do not just plant trees and leave them there. So still on the greening of the inner city, we have partnership with almost the churches, the mosque, the Muslim committees, let me say, the Muslim committees, and of course, the residents of Banjul, where we are actually doing a door-to-door sensitization in Banjul to orient Banjulians about the importance of planting trees and why we need to protect and preserve the trees we have planted in Banjul. And of course, on the fifth component of the project, which is the health component, and of course, is the most important component of the project. It is in partnership with Gambia Red Cross Society, and of course, specifically with the Red Cross Banjul branch. And that is specifically with the Red Cross Banjul branch. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, DJ. So we continue with the fifth component of the project, which is health. And in terms of health, like I said earlier, we have a partnership with the Banjul Red Cross Branch. And the project funded Banjul Red Cross Branch with the CPR respirator for training of basic first aid, and the project has trained seventy-five residents of Banjul, which includes councillors, ward development committees, and the youths of Banjul on the basic of first aid and the importance of training on the basic first aid. Moving on, prior to the project, the Citilink Custom Banjul Project, under the leadership of the Lord Mayor of Banjul, donated an ambulance to the Red Cross Banjul Branch. And still on with more, we have a partnership with EFSTH, which is the main hospital of the country. And we have handed over the burns and wound treatment center at the hospital just a week ago to promote research of alveolar burns and treatment, which focuses on children under fifteen. And of course, with that, I'd like to announce the presence of, the arrival rather, of the Lord Mayor of Banjul, Mrs. Rohi Malik Lo, who is actually the president of Rafela Gambia Chapter, the president of the Rafela Africa Chapter, and of course, the board member of EFSTH, and as well as the second vice president for United Democratic Party. And we welcome the Lord Mayor of Banjul, and I hand over to you, Auntie S2.
Many way president, wa ho di kau, long damse, foto de dey si, foto de dey si. Na pa di la tahawele, be tey, ya ni ne ke di ne, ni ni, ki mo president Rafela Gambia National Chapter, ki mo vice president Rafela West Africa, di gen di di gen nyabo, di gen di ya, khae na yo, ke di we di gen. Ni gen di di gen, di fe ke di ha di na ni, rohi Malik Lo, tu ra ka la ma sa la, bakat to ke be tey. Ya di pa di ka la, mu ho lo, di kanal, kon tu la, ya ke na, po si di ke la di. Nga de ku ye, pe lo, ka la, ma ma tu la, lo lu ku isakare, ku bo ka di re, kon bo ya lo lu, pe lo, ka la, ta di lo lu. Ya ka la, ta di lo lu, ni ku bo ka di re, ka la, tey. Mane, danan ye ni ma sa ne kanga, danan ye ni ma ke mane ke Banjul, damen ye loa si yo, wa nek ni ma di gen. Mu dey, mu a nek si yo, wa nek ni ma di gen, so pare, di na amke, ku amlo e la la ko. Ken ku so ke de, ku la ka la ma sa la, wa ajara tu rohi Malik Lo, kei one na sa bofa. One ne, one ne, si bo, di to, di gen di na bo to. E, one ne, Banjul di gen di na sa bofa, kon ye di gen di Gambia, di ku de to, ya da lo, ku le ba. Kai ye di gen to, kai ye di gen to, rosi lo, okay, kai ye di gen to, bu Banjul, okay, kai ye di gen to. Di be di gen, di ka, di bo le, di mayor, di be lo, and you, and you ho haney, and you fa ho haney, be lo, na lo, sa na le. Ya di be di gen, sa le lo, la ke lo, lo, wa na sohla, sohla, my god, my god, my lady, my lady, di ku di, di ka, ya ku le.
Okay, thank you very much, and of course, would say this once more, we welcome the Lord Mayor of Banjul. For the, the first female mayor in the history of Banjul, I would like a round of applause for the Lord Mayor of Banjul. Thank you very much, and of course, I'd like to say a very special and big thank you to the press for the last being in this project session. And we started from Banjul. And of course, Paradise TV, Member Kering, and all the newspapers that are present. And of course, the radio stations would like to acknowledge your work and say thank you very much for the visibility. And moving on, like I said, it's a led, women-led institution, and of course, we're still celebrating International Women's Day. And we celebrate the Lord Mayor of Banjul, and every woman present here would like to tell you that we celebrate you every day. And we are proud of the mayor of Banjul, who was an inspiration to women in politics, and of course, an inspiration. To a lot of young women that are into politics, and of course, women that are aspiring to take positions in public institutions, and of course, in any other institution in the country, would like to tell you that you are indeed a role model and you're setting standards for a lot of women. And we would also continue with that. Moving on, before we have the opening prayers, we would still like to acknowledge the presence of the CEO of Banjul City Council, Mr. Mustafa Bachiri, and of course, the manager for cleansing service, and of course, manager for planning, uh, Mr. Patli Ture. And of course, Mr. Alaji Ja is the manager for cleansing service. And would like to acknowledge the presence of Lady Councillor, Miss Fintum, and the councillor for Newtown West Ward, who is, sorry, yeah, who is Mamor Ture, and the youth councillor, who is Ablaï Tara Wale. And every other person present here would like to acknowledge your presence as well. And of course, we continue with the program proper. And this is funded by the European Union under the call for local government authorities. Like I said earlier, the Citilink Custom Banjul Project has been in existence for almost twenty years. But this is the first and biggest project the Citilink has, courtesy of Rohi Malik Lo, the Lord Mayor for Banjul City. And of course, under her leadership, we are able to benefit and use this platform to promote good governance, to promote health, to promote greening of the inner city, which is so passionate to her. And of course, the rehabilitation of Crab Island, which is one of the biggest projects ever in the history of Banjul with all mayors present. And of course, and the final one is this most successful story that every Banjulian brags about, where we ensure that every household has a minimum of one waste bin, and it's for free, absolutely free, courtesy, and under the leadership of Rohi Malik Lo. And this is the reason why I said, she is indeed a woman of substance and a woman of motivation, a woman of will and power. And she's also supporting women in the Gambia with Rohi Malik Lo Women Initiative for Girls. So this is just a glimpse, a tip of the iceberg, and she will take you through to everything. We have all watched the documentary, and we agree that she delivered us promise. And yes, the documentary is a manifestation of what she has promised to do and what she has done. So moving on to the program proper, we would like to one more time welcome the Lord Mayor of Banjul and invite her over to the pair podium to deliver her statement. Before that, we would like another round of applause. Before that, we would like another round of applause for the Lord Mayor and I remind you that you have the opportunity to ask questions when she is done with her speeches. So thank you very much. We have the mayor. Okay, sorry, before we call on the mayor, we call on Esang Gom for the prayers. Okay, Imam.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullah. Nyungleni, nyukinakatituramaksantang. Tamabugan nyarwahwa alaykussalam warahmatullah. Ndeke, womeni, kanna ni, deyoy jomi, wai jomi desna. Darayewagut. Assalamualaikum warahmatullah. Lord, assalamualaikum. Nyungleni, nyukaldeka, ki women chuidbi. Na, diken, lim jar, ken homuko. Aluhurana, mo koneteli. Na diken, wai ekol bingeka. Do angbutu do, kipegi nde, yamle koyare. Kon diken, lu yatula. Wali wiyala, yek ngenanti, kipegi diken, lindeka yaro. Maxen bay, do ramker tinyam. Kon diken, nyungleni, ndokela, bineyoy, te dilen, nyanal yala, yala se tahawaya. Barki dema, dema, dafne kamil, nyanal lenkoyala. Yen diken, lu mustam ti adina. Dafne kamil, Pritin Ken Street, nyanal lenkoyala wa nyanal honorable, eh, Lord Mayors of Banjul, mu adi wagi, rugilo. Ki tahawaya, ant, ngaywa, wiko yala mey, ti rehola, kompiti sor, ki hamne, fal lenkoko. Wai, doit, nyunyep, na lenkoka, dapa, singi kurus, singchule, nyanal koyala, final, mu jelko, nah gambia jamkanam. Lo lenkoka. Kon, dunja fdrak, dunpyaga, deyoy nyan, nyerni boka wahani. Azmillahi minasaitani ragin, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil alamin, arrahmanirrahim, Maliki yow midin. Iyaaka Nahbud, wa iyaaka Nasghain. Ihdina serat al mustaqim, serat alladzina hanamta alaihim. Ailil mahduka alaihim. Amin. Allahu'ma alaikum awali, wabikam balazi, wa alaikum iftijai. Robbanahati na afidunya hasanatan, afidakhairet hasanatan.
Ajereje, kia imam, yalna yala, nan go nyana, yoka jama. Ah, kun yo yon ful munyan si Christian Defajo. Supateferek new boostibin programbe. Ah, new dolde oyata gur Banjul, de Rohim Malik Low, de fos diken, gudon mayo, bir Gambia, bir Banjul. Ah, nyudiko, talal, diko, jahmaikbe. Munyo, Akarlo, Akwaba Banjul, Atanakwaba Banjul. Skitpo po amlo elachi, ngalachi ko, mutontula. Jere lenje.
Wow, wow, Aisha.
Here it is, here it is, here it is. Thank you so much, Ahmed. Piaro, Emelva, Fatmenya and Aisha Biga.
Once again, we are here for the third leg of the town hall meeting. And with me, the CEO Bachirli, some senior staff of the Banjul City Council, the project team and indeed, my honorable, oh, let me say, our honorable chancellor. Before anything, I want us to start with a silent prayer, remembering our late comrades and sector. One minute silence. Allahu'ma amin.
Allahu'ma amin.
Before anything, from the feedbacks we are receiving, I am happy to say that the message is getting to the doorstep of Banjulians and indeed, this is the focus of the town hall. Let me just start by showing appreciation, saying thank you so very to each and every one of you here and indeed, to those that are watching it through online videos. Let me remind the people of Banjul on the importance of the meeting. The opportunity to know functions, to know the functions of the Gambia and ask any question. I want to put an emphasis on this, that we are here and the CEO is here, not out of vacuum. We want everybody to ask any question that you want to know. I am here to answer your questions and please do come forward with your questions. And before anything, I want to explain how council functions, followed by the developments and the challenges the council is facing, in other words, the lack of autonomy. I'm sure everybody knows, ne, council has two arms. And one of the arms, Banjul City Council, the CEO, Patrick Mokhame. Benenbi, we are the policymakers, nyungyo ame benen. Ni nyene, ni sini diken, moy, pur pols, pur garde, batili, liwi def, ablikke kata bi, dak yara lenkutu yon, o yara lenkutu yon. Wai, bala magem, sorry, dina gera, mnevet, santane. Sinisai, unme yebi ame, sinta, amol, nintis, sok di feinam pay. Wai, gurgo, ulensi, koski feinam pay, wak diken yala, dini chere dek, town hall be, they call to some money. So as I said, the administrative side of council, Bobo la, the CEO, Ahmed, on the ministry of local government and they are the implementing body of council. So many the implementing body of council, monbi, nyongyo, deyoy, robi, of council. On the policy side, we are the policymakers. So that is the mayor and indeed, the councillor. So nyung, we pass the resolution for the implementation by the administrative. Mo yene, batili, nyang policy, nyongo dekwa, momla batili.
Komra famenita i, sinne, deng buga gis, malibbi, niko yel, nyari fan, chiuidbi. Ne kudne, mayo bi, moy diken, a councilasi, deng digel, imbalibi. Defa amnyongwar, lolu moy batili, ablikke kata bi, nyongyo waradeflolu. Chigat alre, defa men. No hamne, nyonge nekadi, hol, bati.
Diken, importanta mi, bo hamne, buka napuwewa. Mo yene, recruitment and firing officers. From grade six down, regular council, gula recruit. Wai, supasi grade six, deng chipo, council, muta recruit, kemp, lolu, deng am, the Local Government Service Commission, nyong, nyongi binda, advertise, recruit, interview, bapare recruit, anyu konyun, chik council. Defa meni danaka, in a nutshell, nyong, nyongi dey hire, um, anybody bo hamne, is about to grade six. So, ladies and gentlemen, tamabugan introduce, let me introduce the development of council from twenty eighteen to date. It is however important to know the development is based on the manifesto that we saw to the people of Banjul during our campaign. I think this part is very, very important. Because they could make, then nekadi doh, blind direct, did have development, did it. The development, amne, ki yori lenyondoh. Na ne, moni, defa. Master disga, momlen yayo, nyungi diken noko, getak, misandil bakata, so lolu lenyekan, dividi. So defa meni, wo fuli, buka wah moy, konni guna diken, nesele, munyo diken. Ne, mayo, mane kana, mu lema, deng buga, lak samwar, for example, school, si, um, garasi bakau. Because he dyan, fudisla. Fine, lolu council, dino ko welcome, dino, dino ko, um, appreciate, kun nyungi, ini, sen halak, kun nyungu na abvalio to the development of council. However, tamabugan, nyibai, tele, defa manifesto bo hamne, momlen, gien dey won, dek o yari, wahvalio. And this manifesto, defa neka, in line with the National Development Plan and the Banjul Strategic Plan. So this is just to say, ne, we were, if we are not doing development just blindly. Okay, let me start with good governance. Lallain def, si good governance. Kuneka hamne, when we came in council, lingdika, dika def moy, deng am, a task force. Sai ma wa afiri task force bi, dina gera, Mr. Putijalo, aktima. Because defa meni, nyong, su dey motola council, at that time, nyong, nyongi won, essence bi, so infane kute, nyundu, munadem. So they helped with a massive restructuring in, in, in council, pur address, yinga hamne, moni kon, di, rekari, kabi, ngamne, moni kon council, nyong, nyongi on, pur dimbele yu, pur yu, mu na tahwalat council, bubac. Then, nyong, I experts, nyongi won, in their own rights. Ni finance, ndanga, ni, ni, human resources, ni li, akli, lele. Nyong, nyongi, bilser bop, as a team, pur mu nyongi, dimbele yu, nyungu na amion, pur biniyadem. So biniyame, lindika def moy, deng dika set ne, council, amna, a ghost worker, si faneka. Nu address lolu, ghost worker, stan moy, nyanga hamne, deyong, neka council, su werbe dey, nyufayaku, wai, ken disulen, ken hamulen, wai, finde, nde, hamen, nyung farek, moy, su werbe dey, nyugis, benatur, Ibrahima yai, Amiga sama, Fatufal, Maryam yai, nyugis ne, ni kat, werbe dey na, feyaku ney, wai, alan, ken disuulen, ken hamuulen. So task force bi, gis na, ne nyongi, deng deng don feyrek, wai, dun nyong, hamne sa, hamne, sa, fu Banjul City Council, leka. So nyongi, deng monne, be, opa, hundred, so, gini, ney, yen, paski, wadige yala, olaf nyane, kun yaha nyuri nyong, kulige, inakne feyla, wai, ko, hamle, disu yla, ko, komu, nyu yafe. So, lena, lena, hamne, def ney ko, moy, you establish the procurement office. Wah Banjul, defa amlo, hamne, defa important, torop, pur yu, wah rek, te yala ta. Munolo, an institution, moy, operate di dem, te amudli nyawa, a procurement, uh, office. Procurement office, so gisemo, important, civil institution, such a bi, tapalebi, nyang ban, machu wagi, yep, fo fula dey nek. Nakaloko Banjul City Council, on the fair, I stand to be corrected. This is why I said, the CEO is not sitting here out of vacuum. Defa tok fi, pur put man man in order, sumawahe dara, mu orko, peneli, amton, the Mike Bankfi, Nityangfi, mu nyone, Lord Mayor, dey dey, dey mey, utonun. So establishment, procurement office bi, ningdan jende, defa meni, amu won, experts, nyong hamne, nyong faneka, that is a qualified procurement officer, feyku kofa, ne ku fa won. Is with a qualified procurement officer. Lolu, amna. Lolu na, moy, takbe na hamne, council, mu na CFHalis, flipi, gisina hamne, moy, don, dukat, yon, tabu bi, yoyi, yep, mu na, tutu am, paski, procurement officer bi, is qualified, bapare, fumneka, moy, more responsible, pur dimbele na hamne, momla council, dey, dimba. So, um, it pays a dear dividend for council to save heavily. So, appointment of a financial, of a finance director. We know, I mean, a qualified finance director. Indeed, a finance director was there, but a qualified finance director and a finance director or an unqualified finance director, ne kudbe na. So te, Banjul City Council, alhamdulillah, amna a finance director, bapare, ginnah, jah capacity, reinforce the finance department, alhamdulillah, te, munge fonson very well, paski, nyongi, nyongi, dey, dengcha, kopar, binga hamne, momla Banjul City Council, dey am. Another thing, no hamne, still on good governance. Amne, what we call, the record office. Establishing a record office. Before, there was not, no record office in, in council. Record office, ne ku fa won, so, oye, fad yai, fad yai, foy diken, mu de la manje, diken, accounts. Kanja do, mu ne, am, mayor, faktenako. Nyata, agla am, mu ne, am, mayor. Nyata, kula fi, idi, am, mayor. So lolu, institution, a proper institution, wadige yala, kuneka hamne, muntademe, nu. So te, amne, a record office. Record office, bobo, from the mayor to down, to the last person at the Banjul City Council. Record office bi, amna sa tour, amna sa santa, hamna kanja fanyo, hamna ban grade, gandeka, hamna kanja, employ, hamna loy feyaku, lolu, yep, fumneka, mu fasuka de fey, defa dimbele niki, suware, am pensana, suware, am graduate, yoyi, yep, defa dimbele. So Banjul City Council, alhamdulillah, fumneka, amne, um, a record office, pur, am, am, tamid, dey, lolu, rek, wai, defa safeguard all the council's documents. So, dang agis, bu nyewe, with all due respect to the administration, CEO Bankfi, dangala, keke it, mu deng, ekati, wahane, ibi wahane bi, dey hole, keke it bi. So keke it, bobo tamit, mungo po, hold, ten years, dokumune gis. Nyenene, nitamit, amni file. So lena ye, ano file, diusangam, nyenena file, ambidafu, yobuke. And the file is not meant, pur mu ne, kechikiri, defora, nek, civil institution bi, because kuneka hamne, governance, tamid, deng kore, audit. So alhamdulillah, te, nyunge try, pur Banjul City Council tahaw, proper. Recruitment of city security guards. So buge, ngane, city police. Bobo tamit, nyungu nyongi, twenty-five city guards, like, fa fekon. Twenty-five city guards, like, fa fekon. Te kuneka hamne, city guardsi, they are very, very important when we talk about council. Because nyung, suwa Banjul, di, nelau, nyongi tamid, dengsi, am, ahha, kun nyuwa Banjul, mu na nelau, sunyone nelau, mu na ahdo. Marcebi, ni, ni, sel, bagasi, like, fa ame. Te bagasi, yu, yu, no, tamit, alen, la, jar. Te alen, bobo tamit, deng, dey, sona, balen, kor, am. So bobo tamit, marcebi, deng, kora, garde. So lu, def moy, bu nyewe, we recruit, I think, about sixty-five. I stand to be corrected, as I said, CEO Muvi, but I can freely, wa, and safely, wa, ne, now, we have about eighty or ninety security guards, yohamle, nyofane, ka Banjul City Council, pur garde Makatis Squire bi, pur garde Loswaf, pur garde, uh, Marcebi and of course, garde Crab Island and the people of Banjul. So lolu, def ney ko, and then they equipped from head to toe. And I'm sure, everybody will agree, ne look, gina expensive, civil, uh, uh, see, council institution. Civil, uh, uh, see council institution, my police, because dangladi equipped from head to toe, then alen bahana, then alen belta, then alen Hancock, then alen uniform, then alen dalla. Sukade fe nyomita mid, nyomuna look professional, nyomuna de sen lige tamit si Jama. So bobo tamit, Banjo City Council, uh, def neko, and result be dislenko, because minimize na theft in the market. So we have also, still on good governance, still on good governance, we have what we call the suggestion box. Box bobo, moy boyad bohamne, so de me Banjo City Council, dingko fe feka, miunko fe tech, mayobi, munuko ibi. CEO be am right, pur ibiko. The only person, kohanne mo, ame cha be bobo, moy, the PR. Luta nak, mu ne, PR be mo kowa ra ame, hell war na komunanangu. Paski haikna, amna kina hamne mughe binda, mughe binda, pur wa afiri CEO, omuge binda, pur wa hekna wa afiri, um, uh, fadn jai. Mughe binda, pur wa afiri fatumeka, mughe binda, pur wa, the only fortunate person here, kohanne munanyo afira mughe neko, is in, of course, the PR. Because momre, mo ame cha baby. So he, not only baller regmota, the suggestion box am, why need munabuka abvalio, si Banjo City Council mo def, mu ne haran, bukuma waste time, me mayo be for them, or oma time. Let me just write it down and put it in the suggestion box, and this box, then kore ibi, I think twice a week. So, PR mo de de flolu, and where necessary, pur mu nyou, lingbinda mu nyou siman, lolu, PR, dafuore de job, uh, the CEO, CEO be indikati man. Again, good governance. We have introduction of a digital clock in and clock out system. So li, clock in, clock out, lumde dimbele moy, it helps council, pur mo to have control of staff attendance. Lolu la clock in be, a clock out be de de, then yo legesi, gabos, la igena, gabos, sukade fe nyohane, fatumeka, watu bi layo, why fatumeka, watu bi laynibi. Because before, amton lolu, kuneka sayune hangayon, so pare sayune ngadem, sunya oye diwa, ngane de de, month for one. Even though hamne nekula for one sa, why you go in defense of yourself, ne month for one, so le gi na, show lolu dihna, bofane kute, Banjo City Council dihna kohan, so watu boy nibi, Banjo City Council dihna kohan. Again, nyungu nyonyo, duka si Banjo City Council, feykuin fa electricity. Then feka Banjo City Council, according to the CEO and indeed other staffs, four good years, Banjo City Council was operating without electricity. So nu jan operated, moy with generator. Kuneka hamne, operating an institution with generator, my god, is so expensive. Dafasire, because generator be, according to records, it costs about five thousand dollars a day. Today, nyuge operate akunawet, and we are paying round about thirty or forty thousand per, per month. So it means ne, save ney fofo, about two hundred thousand dollars, then save, um, 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 no, sorry, more than hundred thousand dollars, save neko, chi, chi, chi werbe. So, and that's a lot of money, so generally hundred thousand times by twelve, that's one point two million. So, let's look at it on that perspective. So, and then again, generator be, gawakko general parts, and then Banjo City Council, nyungdon operate, digenda, I spare parts. When, in reality, definitely, Monday, lawa, howma kene, why fekuma for moto. Fekuma for moto, the only moto bohamne fekanakova, moy nyari moto, yinga hamne, sumabay, um, laiba, yano koyale yaram, nyari moto yoyi la don. Da wa, te dafu, de lochiwa, si council be, lolu de wa diga sayala, fekanakova, why Banjo City Council, nyungdon jeda spare parts, oh my god, more than, let's say, two hundred thousand per month. Without any, uh, uh, vehicles yo hamne, mu don operate, so for what reason, I don't know. So, Banjo City Council, at this moment, we upgraded the capacity of staff through capacity building. And si jamalobi, we have nine staffs benefiting from professional training, ranging from diploma to degree programs, from both local, locally and abroad, of course. So, meaning ne, amna nyohane nyungendigangal, fi lenyeka dijanga, why amna nyohane, nyugi bitimre, de fa janga, Banjo City Council tamit, mughe de flolu, because nyungu nyonyo, hekna bena o nyari nit. Then feka nyu da dija capacity building, but I can safely wa lenne, more than fifteen it, nyuge, um, uh, nyuge benefit from the capacity building. But again, as I said, nine staff, new benefit from professional training, that is, uh, diploma to degree programs. Recognizing the invaluable contribution of council staffs to maintain its prime objective, council has embarked on salary allowance increment for all staffs and councilors. So meaning ne, Banjo City Council, binyo we, nyiga hamne nengen feka, mi feyaku nyari juni, tei, I can safely tell you ne, nyuge nibi at eight thousand dollars. Te binyonyo, then feka nyonyo, nyari juni dollars, momla gairona. So lolu tamit, def neko, and the essence of that, moy ne nikki, we lige, warna amdegi sakumalo, warna munafei negam. Lolu is human rights, lolu dafuora am, dafuora munaneka, why so disay institutions, su bari, muninko def, uh, definitely corruption be, more de bari. So hadis, before de war duga, instead of ngaduga ko, si posisonsi nimjai, mome gahamne, mughe lige, every day, mughe da, then ko jel inton, duga ko si posiro himali glo, minge hamne, mughe tok tibil ACB. Banjo City Council, with my councilors, then ne lolu da figye, because nun, nyong, Banjo City Council is not there to make profit, dafan neka to service the people of Banjo. So lena lena hamne tam, Banjo City Council def neko, moy reduction of trade licensing. Reduction of trade licensing, lolu tamit, then talk, look calculate koma ba, because when X, nyungdisne Banjo City Council, kuneka len amel, nyawka dianglen amel, kapinta sianglen amel, baba sianglen amel, mechanic sianglen amel, salon sianglen amel. Hey, mane no, li, munutaneka, something is wrong. Legi, nyu hokho la, nyuna wa, lan monika problem, lan mo hell, nyungdisne nyunex society bila deka, sumama, ak Banjo solsi nimjai, magi ayda, ak magi kumba. Nyonyep, nyinyoneka mechanic si, nyinyoneka kapinta si, nyinyoneka baba si, te nyonyep, hamne, and, and bu de bari. Why na bingo hole, nyungdisne, lumeli port authority, lumeli bansi, lingde de charge, ak nyu charge solsi nimjai, minge hamne, mechanic la, danaka boku hole, then buga tollo. Then buga tollo moy ne, solsi nimjai, ngay ko charge, five thousand dollars, but pare de charge bank be, thirty thousand, mandamanelulu, amu ben difference. Fine, legi loo def, nyungamba tok ho la tok, nyun esolsi limi gahamne, nyungko charge, where bu de bu neka five thousand. Nyunalegi, then ko wa ni deku two thousand five hundred, nyunade same thing, si nyawka ti, nyawka bohamne, nyungla fey thousand five hundred, di de ngat charge five hundred, why di nyel nyar, kunge dilbe na halen, momita mid jangal konya u, paski funneka oyefla. Ne khalibinga jangal nyau, dingko jo mu leka, dingko jo mu nan. So nyu hollolu, watana nyong, nyungdisne, nyawka bu neka, nyun balen nyenko wa sa, wadigayala, dafafeka, nyawka be, kapinta be, mechanic be, salon be, nyonyep kuneka, mughe amai halayo hamne, nyomle nyo jangal, sen kiri, sen, sen palasi. Lolu dafameli, dimbele society bila, why na dimbele Banjo City Council la tamit. Legi bingde fe lolu, nyungamba tok, wa nyinyawka ti, wa nyile nyonyep, why na kuyel bank si sen boss, egal ko chikou, pur guard biga hamne, momle nyakafi, nyukelko de la ko fele, te mughe dem smoothly. Amunchi bena problem, even though it was a big hassle, hassle, nyomunandide ni aknele, why, mashallah, mughe dem very well. So, I'm giving its commitment to improve standards of living in the city council man, the only debt free council. Bobo nasmo korewa, damade jagaratu matogai, damade jagaratu matogai, paski binyonyo Banjo City Council, then feka Banjo City Council, amel bank si yep, tou la la wa, bank bohamne yani opridiga bifi. Banjo City Council, amel nala, ben des standard bank, Axahel Bank, why bank bu neka, Banjo City Council duga nafa, nela nam drama, nam bay, nam si si, level nu, nyunende level rek, why na nyu barin de la te, nyuna wa. Luta nyuneka de lep funeka, te central bank wo huda, manele, central bank dumuna wa dada, because that is what we call window banking. Window banking moy ne, sumanyu we lep anti fat five one thousand, malevi alisabe five two thousand, lep fatumeka three thousand, liter dumad default moy, he is sumawel be day, majoki five dollars, joki five, joki five. So central bank lolu, dunsumula nyop, pur wa lanela, halo, desma default of the bad of the feeling. So one take, lolu disadvantage, we amon, to the people of Banjo, moy ne, fatumeka, worry wood, because five dollars, no koya, every month, month is okay for month, because kuneka hamne munu lori cha bank. Why not interest be more for them? So dangaga disay, Banjo City Council, bank be more like one million dollars, at the end of the year, dihna jo bank bobo one point five million. So mu dem to two years, mu dem to three years, bank si worry win, nyonyo de fek, moy new compare, the interest rate si, to them, millions of million. Why tei, I freely, is the answer out the gambia, wo hamne, amelu ben van, we are debt free, and I can safely wa ne, we are the only council throughout West Africa, wo hamne, amu ben bo, we are debt free. Thank you, that's why I'm, I'm a weak and broken. Alhamdulillah, chilulu, bubaha ba, lolu smokorewa, damachile kontan ka, bapare chikonlulu. Onlulu, nyunsing, uh, uh, revenue be, nyunko maximize a fifty-five percent. I don't know if it is safe, pur wa ne fifty-five percent, why forty-five percent, bobo mom, egana fa, maximize neko, lolu ta, nyumuna yokasatalisi, nyumuna jo allowances, singa hamne, nyuge ti halis, singa fey eight thousand, amna benin two thousand five hundred bohamne, di de ngakojoh mu neka sa allowance. Lolu, bepa kohanne yani ti halis, Banjo City Council, nyu la ko fey, pur, uh, pur aha. So tei tamit, lena lena hamne, Alhamdulillah, Hira Bill Alamin, uh, no palna mama, konkonyunsing jangga, soriwut, pur nyumuna controlling, ah, hamne, mom, monika council. Counsel tei, bepa, bank account bohamne, council amonnako, tek nenko, council mu yeron, at only two bank accounts. Te so disay, benin bank account, be muniko teksa, because anything, no hamne, then kowa, am from government, dafuora dem to that bank, lolu ta te dinko, why, hundred or millions of bank accounts, yep, funneka, they are no more functioning. Only two accounts, nyoneka di, uh, bank accounts, nyoneka di function, so deka disay, di lolu nehna control, nyun minge hamne, primary before, amma primary to the M, sing jangga yagoo, uh, soriwut, lolu di nekumuna dis, di nekumuna control. Uh, on a serious note, nak, Sen Guse High School la wache, mu nyuge fa dem to University of Falun. And I'm always proud to say that, because Falun is the, is five, fifth, uh, best university in the world. Why not unfortunately, rohimali glo, je hadu degree, why right now, ma penda ak ayda nyunko nyafe, si university be, motangende disney, Monday, October, every time, mangende yogi, si university be. So another thing, no hamne, is very dear to my heart, moy, Banjo City Council send collaboration with the CSOs. Once upon a time, damokorewa, mane mangi won Sweden, nekanati council in Sweden, I was a nominated, uh, councillor for four good years. So Hannah, tuba be nakalenge, respecte CSOs, because CSOs, malamunu dimbele, si check and balances. So, so korragale, so ragale CSOs like, hamal ney, diga diga, warna ho la ta bopa. Tei, Banjo City Council, mughe lekalo, at the, uh, dog Banjo, bubaha ba, haba, nyonyo advice, nyuge nyosuindos tepsi, sungi se dara, they call our attention. So bobo tamit, is, 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 is a very good, uh, collaboration, and Banjo Youth Council, nyomita mid nyuge, uh, collaborate agno, and indeed, all sports committee, nyiga hamne, nyunge neka Banjo. So nyomita mid nyuge collaborate agno, and if I said sports, it's not only football, wo, nyuge collaborate, address ulasi, and nyenane, 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 nyep, nyuge, Banjo City Council, nyuge job talented agno. So, this is so far, I'm, si good governance. So, so len deglow, limanen was si good governance, wa na lenin startebi nyue council, the family dey fa fek construction bohamne, dafarrenka, dafarrenka, moy ne, even the CEO, CEO, card dom, dudan tahou Banjo City Council. And, and it's so unfortunate, ne having the power of a CEO, civil institution. Why, lima de wa rek moy ne, uh, sometimes, we as politicians, then de jail advantage too much, why disna delegi CEO be momita mid, dafat tahou palasam, bubaha ba, haba, te ma respecto chilulu, mu neke bor, amaneke sumabor. So moy, te lolu yep, duka wo def, moy task force be amon, nyonyo jubante, one million, geni ghost worker si, nyu, munayoka sarali si, munakindi kurangbi wat back, munafay bank si, munatek bank account si, munadef yoye, mashallah, si nyom lengisi ubuntu be, nyonyo one, yon be. So nyonyo, si development and empowerment. Indeed, Banjo City Council, definitely tutti, binyo we legi four years. Why, something is very important, no hamne, damakobuka underline, moy ne, sunyowasun development si, I always want us to reflect back, nakala Banjo City Council melon, a tei, nakala Banjo City Council, uh, mel. So, so amenatal bobo, si sahal merek, singa mu na appreciate, lala, council be tei def. So again, binyo we, feykuin Banjo City Council, mo am, what is called abattoir. Abattoir is very, very important, especially si city. Mandabade wa ne nyari afiri yo hamne, si ti bu neka dafuora am, moy lumene abattoir, and of course cinema, why legi ninisriyosu, afiri cinema, because of, uh, internet, why si ti bu neka, si adu debi, amu ben si ti bohamne, musna va travel. And definitely, de kayuma de mashallah, barin alol, why amu deka bohamne, dihna dem dumafu fek, cinema. So nyungu nyonyo, feykuin abattoir, Birbanu, so lolu, lolu mo def moy ne, uh, dafan def ndawalbi, musir, because nyonde nyojal ndawalbi, getabi, yobuka abuka, sing kore abuka, nyuduka ko tibil moto, indiko. So pass bobu nu nu gahamne, mom len fey, then kore ada, tibil ndawalbi, mota ngaidi ganyunan, Banjo ndawalbi de faser, litah musir, moy, lolu gahamne, mom len amu Banjo, te wara dem fele, uti kofa. So tei, I can safely wa lenne, uh, Banjo City Council, mughe sampa abattoir, and very soon, begin dis abattoir be, mu, mu, mu pare. So Banjo City Council, tambe binyonyo, then feka a lot of problems in the market. Market be, joy nen, joyati, joyati afiri wanak, and wanak is very important, sakatumachi bir mase, bohamne, nyifaneka, nyu opa yep, digen len, te nyom muninkongori, nyon muninyo tahou, topato sing bopa, kongori nakala nyodef. So binyo we, songa nen wana ki, um, 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 in collaboration also, I have to thank the Chinese Embassy, nyomita mid yapale nen nyu, nyari wanaki yo hamne nyonyo kosampa. Yeneni, nyu, uh, uh, from the ground, to finish nyamnyo kadef, yeneni Banjo City Council nyomita mid, nyukojengo, renovate yep, bete, so de ma si bir mase be, dinga duga, ngato pato sa bopa, ngage na, lisikatai, trak moy ne, hekna deka fey, dollars. So yoyi, dollars, dollars yoyi, momle de use, pur di ta, gene di ta, gen si gahamne, mom moy, rahas, wanak be. So Banjo City Council, lena tamid lo hamne, def neko, moy ne, binyonyo, benanid len feka Banjo City Council, defias scholarship, benanid, len feka Banjo City Council, deka feias scholarship. Tei, Banjo City Council, mughe fail, over two hundred halen, mu len de fail scholarship, nyiga hamne nyenani, nyuge de UTG, nyenani MDI, nyenanyage dem Gambier College, amna nyohane graduate, then just we are good from the Ida, uh, Ida IGS, Telurin Institution. School of North Sea, of course, we have GTMI, amne you for them, we have these people going to different institutions, IT institution, yo tam, amne ko, senior schools, nyunende fey, nyiga hamne, then yekasi private, for Virginia also nyu kodef, lower basic, and even, North Sea Banjo City Council, mughe de flolu, te lima wa binyonyo, benanid len feka, we benefit from lolu. Why nun, we are well aware, ne halis Banjo City Council be, ask can be more common, rohimali glo, what?
So do you have a little bit of a hole? Hey, nothing I know what's a whole new like five hundred. So they may fool for head now hundred dollars thing I say. Um, look at me the finale car. And another thing, look, I'm there. Look at me, what did I learn? That must be content, top. Why in a decade, I'm a radio. City, I'm a radio. Banjo regular. Why, Ben Julian, it's my name, do I know? Congratulations. EU project be Indiana a radio bill, banjo. So you need to meet the next one radio. You could be the day blue legal, I'm name, why help beer, uh, banjo. So, so my head is smart hop. Then I'm classic, you know, no. Then I'm learning, 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 you body, you have me. I T dinggo from my daddy. The game on a younger, um, uh, solar. The game on a younger, younger mobile. I'm not, you know, you have me. Then could be the drink call. Because technology, but after they evolve. So why anyway, however, then for eight smart hops. You know, I'm for him, let me. The final Nika, uh, music center. Music center be, we're gonna find young guitar. But pare, the far, I'm a recording studio. Bobo mom is very dear to my heart. Because book magis misses here, you know, I'm a young, I can buy you. New J M C B T D recordi. Low, you from there can get there now. And equipment, yeah. Then could you let Belgium, when you face, you feel, for you, I'm quality. So, um. With the help of the EU, uh, project again. Swing town hall be, yeah, is digitalize. Yeah, then could digitalize. And thanks to the EU project. Mashallah, you meet a meet. Moon, you're gonna say. Moon, you're gonna say Austin. Moon, you're gonna say EU. You know, they were a good again, Jeff. You're meet a mid low, definitely go. Again, by New City Council. Soon they will be road projectsy. Soon yet, you road projectsy. New Barry, they want to buy you project, buy you project. And I want to take this opportunity. For thank the government. Because who did I buy you? The family, you know, he might go. And the council, you're gonna make a dimbley. Why, however, it's important. For what, banjo, ham. Ian, tell you, I'm the book, um, chief. Because every time you need a money. That tell you something, I'm still a booker. That tell you something, I'm still a booker. Why, to put the records right. More in a tally down the at Tabak Road. Bobo, council, more, I got that. Tell it down the at Tabak Road. Bob, could see by your project. Banjo, Bob, Bob, could see by your project be. Um, um, council, you're a good guy. Prime Met Street. Council, more, I got that. Peel Street. Council, more, I got that. Spalding Cove. Council, more, I got that. Spalding Street. Council, more, I got that. Harding Tin. Council, more, I got that. Rankin. Council, more, I got that. So it's Lancaster. Council, more, I got that. So it's very important. For me, you're not differentiate. Lala, council, you got that. At Lala, banjo, project, you got that. Because he, he let water. Nick, I'll, I'm gonna move, because he buy you. Low, you say, I'll, I'll. It's very important. For again, I'm for elect. Now, wow, soon you will be together, then. Now, by your project, we leave la. Yen, tell me, you're gonna have me. Lead a man, give Lancaster, most of all, okay. The mayor, I'm gonna Lancaster, okay, see. Man, give Spalding Cove. The Spalding Cove, okay, see. Man, give Spalding Street. The Spalding Street, okay, see. Man, give Stanley. Stanley, okay, see. Man, give ranking. Ranking, okay, see. Man, give Lancaster. Lancaster, okay, see. Man, give Harding Tin. Harding Tin, okay, see. The man, give private. Private, I'm okay, see. Low, you not my transparency. There is nothing against anybody. Why, no, no, what I mean. Kune, cause I'm. Need fee, leave la, Jeff. I kill him, feel it, I do. Because I'm the commission, so you wait. Man, I'm a magazine. I'm a booker, so my, yeah, I'm. So, by New City Council. We're getting your time. For fence the dome site. And again, thanks to the EU project. Dome site be, you can your fence. Dome site, we not. I'm a little, I'm a name. That the dome site is very expensive for maintain. And again. I'm not your hand, I'm your name, come out too. You're not even for, you're not getting it, so you're gonna, yeah. So you're gonna go. You're not getting it, in fact. Mashallah, I go, I'm.
Politique bidafni sonal trop. Politique bidafni sonal, sonal bo hamne wat diga sayala. Da ga gis the council sinin war mula di meliniti sah. Daf de nahari kudimbe len. Tanat soha leena, new mer. Sohne li, nene meyebuwa fana wali. President be mom keena, cannot be blame. Muntadjele, cannot be, uh, uh, cannot take all blames. Da fa am nyohamne, nyon neka tamit chun president be delegee. Nen nyuhantedi kate yala ta. Man United Democratic Party la neka, UDP. Sohla neka. Why should we go America? Nen nyankowa. Dino na wa, da fa menirek, every time you have blame maybe. Hey, I'm not leadership, nakalamen. So he says sometimes, see kodiye he de blame. My kodiye bang, du dada de, damo kodiye, damo deje lto gombe, ma tof man. Oh, me je kote kosusma bito gobi. Hey, do mom keena de, I can tell you that for free. So da rahe we ban you, mani besu de muda, nene meyobile, meyobila. Hey, ye la bena one minute, nga halat ne. Meyobi mom, dah meyobi lolo responsibility emla. They did, responsibility be. Am na nyene nyohamne, nyohkowa ame. Why sometimes a yejele politikla, asko sebe ngahame. Suidega bigote sah, bin komula wani ni. Watah damane, meyo di na duga tikiiri, di na adem si vui, di na tahosi Marseille. Degebi mo, damo buga ni ni nyohamko. Because lolu, moy sumajutier, sumadigati ak ni ni. Ni ni mu ninga nene kadile na hre, sayune ka ni le dinah. Purlan, on interest meyobi, on interest aidah, on interest ifatu. Damo buga sumahaleyi nyohamne, those days are gone. Fumneka ni ni, da nyora aware, da nyora ham, ten you as the political leaders. Noran war hamlo, te walahi, yen na di initiative ne. Ye na, ha manakale kogaidi, wohe, sa ye na, uh, um, um, ye na ndogal. Ye na ndogal ne, di na duga sikiiri, di na adem si vui, di na adem si Marseille, di na adem si bigbi, ben ni ni. Bantin brisa di na fatah ni yo duga si, nyohamal en. Lan moy war, uh, council, lan la council death, ag lan la council war death. Elek, ag difficulty singa hamne mom la council am. Lolu is very, very important. Again, sumane lack of collaboration from institutions. Limachina ma moy ne, so sete te port authority. Damadem di tuki, sumade me dakar, ga gis the port of dakar. Ye ne isanak de rus, mu orla pen ne domi wa dakar, rek nyofana deka delegee. Domi ban julitami, nen nyuhantedi kawo ri yo tok sikiiri, te port authority neka fi. Nyonyo da nyuwaran neka nyohamne, by and force, it's a must, den fora neka. Soha here, send argument, limde neka moy, the port is not only for banjulians. Why support be depolute? Nyanda, nyanda de sonal, ban juliancy. Support be de hey, nyala sonal, ban juliancy. Lolu tamit, den ko what they consider. Wa ho mane, of course, it's a national institution. Lolu man, kuma kohuta, man si sumabopa hamnako. Why nak sufeke ne, hundred need nyofore delegee, wat diga sayala, fifty, den ko wara de wa ban you. The same thing, senawek, the same thing, sen gamtel. Why ana wa banjuli, damlen gen said len, fofo no no, dolen fa feka. And this is a hard fact. So ko weha nyene meyowhatina, why limoneka deka be rak? So, that's it, public institutions, singa hamne, nyon neka banjul tamit. Public institutions, singa hamne nyon neka banjul. Lumelni bank, singa hamne nyon neka banjul. For God's sake, da fa am du len war, CSR is a must. Mandedla, bohamne corporate social responsibility la tuda. Corporate social responsibility is a must, mandedla, international bebe koredef. Why ni fi de fokne, gambia na, sen problem moy ne. Bank bu neka, neka bir gambia, or institutions, singa hamne nyon neka be banjul. Den fokne, empowerment, also social corporate responsibility moy. Nu gen de tisa, president, uh, 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 program, nu den de kuti sati, lolu moy social corporate responsibility. My God, ne kud lolu, ne kud lolu. Li is a mandate bohamne, council lagena yellow, paske sibid banju city council, sibid banju fi, fi gen de operete. Den fokne, nu den said, minister, be ngahame moli, gena, gena. Am man gen te, New York, otan candrin, lolu moy social corporate, uh, social, um, um, uh, corporate social responsibility. Ne kud lolu, li da fa neka mandate bohamne, si linga am, bapa de sah, at the end of the day. Da flade de helps is a branding, da flade helps is a branding. Why tey, sumataha we fi, te wo ho mane standard chatat bank den ko de def. Duma def justice senior, standard chatat bank. Sumadigati ak yala laywa, dumafita how, di, di farrel ben bank, amu ben bank bohamne, da fa ne rohim ali, glo mustafa duga, ne level new. Thank God, try na, be banju city council, sohlu de level. Standard chatat bank, Sahel bank, nyari bank si, sayune ka nyunge nyos, uh, banju city council. Di japa, chikomba banju city council. Nyohamda, da nyoneka ni di melilen, gen fey, fey aldiro mehalen scholarship, uh, university. Nyohamda de nyone, haru ni jele ten mit, nyu fey, nyu, nyu, balé, uh, independence life. Nyohamda de nyonwane, haru ni yo defli, o ni yo deflele. Why den ko de def, ten you na na glue de fo wakunye, nen nyenak, de fundar, di dirmbaga banju city council. Nyu fokne, nyundan wara gene na di damda, usisen ganao. Walahi, lena regla bugawa. Institution bohamne, mi na lolo sa boopa, pur def lohamne, da fa correct. Di na ambis bohamne, den ko buga correct, dao correct. So man len di och, di len wane is a mandate, then you wanna new, gen japa chikomba banju city council. Corporate social responsibility, fi ganeka, fi ganeka, nyoko gana yellow, dan ge gene ko, di dem fenen. And it's not about tisa or ten country meetings, no, no, no. Banju city council, bukud lolu, li bukamoy, gen yo japa chikomba sunhaleyi, lulu, purnyun, mon de nyowa, uh, CSR. Banju city council, um, come lima weha, lack of sufficient, um, resources. Therefore, it remains a major challenge for council. Especially in implementing some of its developmental programs and running in meeting its daily needs. Moy ne, haris koper, be ngahame moli wara am. Banju city council, ne kudi am foso de koper bobu no no. Paske so sete banju city council, damo kodiye fara la wana, why damha muleni ni dey me de dego. Banju city council is one of the poorest council, sibir gambia befi. One of the poorest council la wale, sibir gambia befi. This guy yen ne council sinin nyoham, suny ame, banju city council, ame beena. Hamal ye ne ne council sinu ge am tell. Even though it's true, nen nyom nyonyo opale overheads, lolu mom kune ka munna konango. Why so sete banjuli, nyu geten moy, wana ko di last time, manela. Billboard, singa hamne, nyun mom len dan feko, legi, enar, enyo kore feko, te banju city council, uside am wonders. Hamgolu tam ne hutu. Car park, singa hamne, banju city council mo kona feko, tey banju city council, limche am, ki adbi, dui passen ye nanti million. Ye nanti million, duka de passen. Te according to CEO, then don am be twenty-five million per year. So legi setal gabobu no no, linkside am, legi diare len kodiyo, diare si paray, nyu dako government, government superay, mumosa new a two million. Kune ka, oh, one point seven million, duka mu sa passen. So at the end of the year, dui se passen four million, why na, taxi moto ifi nyoneka, nyonyo ne dija garasiwa na ki, nyonyo fa balé, nyonyo fa de fiya. Hamgane lulu wat diga yala, uh, hell waro komuna ngangu. So nyonge nyang government nyomta mit lulu, purnyun, ili waro back. So banju city council, da fa important tamit. And one thing, lohamne, da fa very, very, very important. The every, uh, meeting boneka, damo de put emphasis on that. Moy, be ngahame, mom la subvenson, be ngahame, mom la government de johe, du de yo. Subvenson moy ne, so feke ne tey, dey buga sample stadium. And the development budget, hundred dollars era. You know, hundred dollars be, mom len buga use adbi, pur develop banjul, pur defli, pur defli, pur deflele. Le genagadis de from hundred dollars bobo. Uh, taransu, taransu from hundred dollars bobo, government more ore ini, pur budget be mut hundred percent. Pur budget development budget be pur mumut. So mom soha in the wood, da fa men nyun, stadium, bo gandene kubuwa na sampa, bin komuna sampa. Paske twenty-five percent be already duga ne kuti budget be, ten you. So bobo tamit afu de, sonal trop, ne, and, and, and of course, is a law, why bete, uh, musinko gis, musutanyo. So bobo tamit, uh, da fu de geten, bobaha ba haba. Then I know hamne moy de geten, moy lack of valuation. Mu don dun de amu ndolebi, pur value, sakir. For example, te sohola, the banjul mall, banjul mall be tey, lum tuti tuti tuti. Borom, abuneka, da fa am four million dollars si, si rent something, abuneka. Why sumala weha nala, abuneka, mugae fey banju city council, five hundred dollars si, yo doko belief. Because diha moy, ker bufa nek on, baran kolon sampa, lulu la ker bobu de, de fey. So even though a develop NASA, why still, because you am in the right to value. So bete five hundred dollars bobo la, la, la neka de fey. Um, uh, government money, ben ne ni la am, ko hamne moy expats evaluation. So bete, uh, mu nyage da chikoku, purnyun de fa de valuation, meaning ne, every year banju city council, lum ponpon, lum tuti tuti. Mugae lose better ten fifteen million, because am in the mandate for value. So lulu tamit afu dal, si, si port authority, port authority mugae expand, 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 right? Why? Because lack of, uh, um, um, lack of, um, um, mandate to value, to, to make valuation, lulu da fu new sonal trop. So bobo tamit nyonge hot government, pur mu, gapa leni chilolu, mu dajni demandet, pur nyumuna def, uh, valuation bobu no no. So banju city council tamit, again, another, um, problem bohamne, banju city council amnako. Moy, lack of people paying rates. Man len di och, di len nyan, kune ka su de me. Giri yala, wale sen kilifai, aburam kiri, nyu face in ratesi. Man len de hamne last time, wana lene seventy-one percent or seventy-two percent of compound owners dun de fe rates. Try na nyuneka, def ne masla, try na nyuneka, wane nyuneka, def ne nyuneka, nyu ban. And most of these people nyohamne, dun de fe rates, I can tell you, they are tycoons. Ma ame, eh, twenty care, thirty care be banjul, why da ngah da obesona, dun ngangu. Amindo, iborbu set mu nyo adjoy, meyo jogalwa sinie, meyo jogalwa sinie. Why Mashallah, CEO, wana mo barke dey mane, da fa taku be de ger, mane ko acha bo kon. So pur hamal en ren ne, sikolo lulu forty-seven million dollars si, moneka, rates depth, yo hamne multibility, banju city council munu kodiyo. Forty-seven million dollars si, lulu dega dega, munna sample haleyi, uh, uh, sumunta sample stadium sah. Why munna sample eministadium, why lulu try na def ne nyuneka, munu kodiyo, why CEO, munu de fa taku be de ger, uh, pur dem gi ni haris bobo. Another thing moy, the lack of bureaucracy, the slow, uh, astafula, the slow bureaucracy be ngahame. Moneka in the decision, uh, making. So 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 ne da ra banju city council, da ga bina, uh, minister, na harco, minister be replyla, for example, soha ri tuki. Understand nane, and this is why sometimes, uh, I understand this, uh, clearance be, is, uh, it was an executive, uh, order. Executive order is not allow, executive order mustani kalua. So da ngah gis ne, then ne, smala meyobili tuki, or balaa anybody tuki from council, da ngah am, uh, clearance. That was then, when the former regime was here, nyomnyo in the one that executive order. Why na, so sete te, uh, uh, MPC. Nyom, amu executive order, nyondenge dey duga, nyodamli, nyomnyo dam tuki, zigbo get tuki. So why still, meyo si, suny wara tuki, tey ngah am sa kula wane, kay legi legi majolo one million dollars. Why do mu na dem, da ngah wara dem si minister be, minister be sukona he mu, mu na wow, sukona he mu na didit. Why this is not a law, this is not a law, this is an executive order. I don't know whether understand an executive order, ag lohamne, luala. So bobo tamit bukana, yo, so president de dega, muhamnel, this slow, slow bureaucracy, am na luba reba re lohamne, mu koi yahal, council si. So, and, and bapa de nyi rani, executive order, at, um, um, uh, luwa. So bobo tamit afu de, sonal trop, trop, trop. And not only that, why other slow bureaucracy yo hamne, uh, mugae doh, and lima de wamoy, we are very close to the people. Nyonyo, nyonyo botini ti, so bureaucracy buslo, da fu de sonal. So da fa meni explain na ko di last time, about chilampai, of course, transparency, man si mom ti bo pa, lola de advocate. Why sometimes, fok mu yonam tuti, si council si, pur, um, a very, muna, muna move. So, uh, lack of collaboration, also acting MPC, lulu tamit afu de sonal trop. Because so sete te, uh, lima de wamoy, local government authority, um, uh, council like other public institutions, and rights and representatives. Such as parliamentarians for the promulgation of good laws that enhance our work. Lolu moy ne, nyun, uh, da gen sohla MPC, purnyun gapa len yo. Tei so sete, nyonge wane, stores, banju stores, banju stores, join na fino to stores, no to stores, mesona. Ama nyohamne sanegewane, wa meyobi bukut stores again a fi. Ah, mane dega dega na, da nyon mu na toin meyore de. Meyobi, mu no ta gi ne stores, be banjul, because stores mayobi, dolem moy the Local Government Act. Momme, be slow la de moy dolem, and nyanga hamne, nyode in the stores, be banjul. Physical plan, nyode dey, uh, uh, tamit be, ten nyom nyune luwa, constitution be, molen mom len bubo, the constitution be na. Moy ma mi, Local Government Act be, lo, constitution be luma, Local Government Act mu na tuti dara. So constitution be, tei sumaye be degi, mu ne ok, da fa de fa baylo. Whata sumadi gi nyana, baylos, baylos, baylos. Hey, bu len ken buga politige, oh, mu bugale na na, chide nyuwaraja garbaylos, nyuwaraja garbaylos, this la baylos. Sumadigati ag yala, reg line wa wa banjul. Walahi, barke bayne, sumadigati yala regla len de wa. Dumale fuwa, da la lohamne, da fa inekalohamne, elek mulen foli, morus, dumawalef. Baylos, moy luwa bohamne, ne kuti bi constitution be. Why bu ne ke sibi constitution be, council mu na tuti dara. Watah wahe kacha, kacha, yu du ma se de sonal sumabopa. Because da nyonyo bugale na na, oh, nyonyo bugaluneh, uleneh, nyonale wow, meyobi be nyade de baylos, meyobi be nyade de baylos. Mane, sumabundi office be, lala wahte dutu. Aise twinyayefaneka ak binta. Nyofana deka, legi na, am ne fa kenen, benen halabohamne, nyunko guru na mu, wara nyoneka si meyoba, anam na mu. Mombe tamilya sanu, mu fa. Why limale de wamoy, di len di lakte, wana leni dine sah, da fa na mu lakte. Bu len na mu nyunahlen, dine da fa na mu lakte, du dine bu baybulbi, du dine bu korambi. Yala monen lakte len, jungle len, pur gen ham. Come meyobi sumo office banji ni, banju bundaobi, so ye de town to the first, nyema de lo la ko. Da nyu lak mane ma, meyo, ma de sumo MPB, ma sumo council obilila wa. Walahi, di na la kose tal album set with, te dosa am daro lohamne mu le meet. Baylos, ye nyong wahni, so bang go and bu de beke baylos, baylos. Damo de wo sometimes, ba ni hamne be baylos. Fumneka ni, sumale de example, legi sumane, seven o'clock banjul, da nyo de fluwa, nip da nyuwaro dem tedi. This is an example. Legi nak sufeke ne, luwa be moy ne, kune ka da ngah am, free movement. Doha be sayula nehe, wahal bemla ne, defal bemla ne, damala hamal ne. Baylo bobu no no, mu no ta dem fan, den ko je sanne ko fele, paske luwa, am na lene lohamne momda wa. So yo yu da bo bo ngai baysi he, bu ba haba, haba, haba. Fumneka na campaign dawna, fumneka campaign dawna, mayor al banje daxi, council she banje daxi, luneka nyone meyobi, luneka nyone meyobi. Wale limale de wamoy, new story, da leje len town trip, da wale drive for the boom dem de, da ta how hard, and soha here, bapa de, nyendu gati dem. So lolu, tamit neka na lohamne, uh, suny MPC de nyuwaro gapa len. Council de fa waro de 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 ak MPC. Sukade fe, nyoham nyun, nyon joy, nyomnyo, yo bu kuti house be, gapa len yu chi. Paske na de delegee MP, delegee MP wat diga yala, du, du delegee tourmalit. Du delegee is fix lampa, du delegee jagartali. MPC, this year war moy, nu den lobby, lolu moy, moy, moy len war, ag jagar, uh, luwa. Why legi fumneka de kubra falu, ne man ma de da le in the lampa. Kubra falu, ne di na le in the motorbalit. Kubra falu, ne di na le in the panibalit. Kubra falu, ne di na le in the scholarship. Legi na bu ndele, ye plinga hamne, mom la council be wara def. Suny falo, walahi, malen kowa, dun kodaf, paske hamne nyulu de sen delegee. So baylen sen hel bu ba haba, haba, selin yen de war, nyom sen delegee, moy jagar luwa. Why sen delegee, du tu ri malide. Why nak sen delegee tamit, nyuwaro degegen council be, sukade fe council be mu joy, nyohamko. Sukade fe nyu bukosi negi luwa, kolon afiri, uh, uh, no to storesi, no to storesi. Kolon lulu, safara de kubuwa, bu yada, kolon lulu dehna be banjul. Why dogis be MP, nyu baye, ma yeps, sumako, bopa be, men yoi dau, ma suba haleyi, suba agon bu de beke, bu ya, gurek, mamutu, de fa da wada, wada, wada. Be mamu, subo pa ma yaramko, manako mamu, hamgolu, hamgolu, buke yega. Deman de dem to, paske li lo, tumu na de tamit, dosi mundar, dosi mundar, deman de de no pa leku. Pa ba bu tamit, the same thing, hale de nyonwada, wada, 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 be, 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 be bugade. So, uh, because, afiri storesi, sen borin nyom, nyom de gana, uh, affect. So lolu, nyonge nyan, MPC nyomita me, pur nyu degeyante, council, le calo ak council, uh, bu ba haba, haba. Pur nyu mu nyu dimbele si, um, luwa i, council mu na am autonomy. Sukade fe, new, uh, policies and programs, singa hamne, mom la city be wara am, sukade fe mu yamba. Um, again, nyungiske bu ya gut, dentin bridge, nyongfa, nyongfa, my, uh, sad mine de mu gi on. Bobo tamit, uh, gen ne ne address co, um, chouli baray, baray, be bugade, managli ba ja hal moy ne. Da nyon ta how, nyoneka season WhatsApp group si, sukade fe nyunan, dentin bridge nyongfa de fly, dentin bridge nyongfa de flele. Ken yo, exponential mayo, meyo li li, meyobu se dege, dem def, nyontona wabi, meyobu de fa barifina. Meyobu fi na de, meyobu huloya, ken, hamgabe, kunde huloya. Kulal sumanja bodi, ak kulal banjul, regla amal affair, musulien ma diga, ma isaga ken, oh, ma huloya ken. Why na kulal banjul, kulal sumanja bodi, bobo tamit na de lingis mayo. Lulu, paske yakar, watah gen johmako. Ta damade waleena, dega 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 dega, gen mu fi ken, da gen mu fi ken buy. Why gen set mama mu nyaka solomi, narohimali glo, gen ma def ma di false female mayo, damata kunakbe de ger. Damata ku be de ger de, wow. Lulu tamit bukana mu, 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 mu le, why say meyow her, meyoni barifina, meyoni barifina. Fumneka nyur, de politige lulu, uh, meyofa barifina, meyofa aggressive. Why nak singe weh wale lulu, like len, fungen fek meyo, musi mekudu hulo. Fungen fek meyo, musi mekudu he, fu la one meyong fa hulorek, hamal ne afiri banjul, walahi, mom la hulo. Amu ben ne ni bohamne, da fu meje ne japona managyo tamit, mandi oma, pur bu rekni di huloya ni, hanada fa mu adot. Why dem len di pi pi mane ke meyobi legi, kogisma wahlbeena, bar nyari barre, bar bi nyaga, somu na harirek. Hamal ne sumabani galal, te sumanja bodi galal. Ko legi, um, amna lohamne tamit, di na kubuwa, moy, be ngah hamne, moy, policy priority singa hamne, mom la banju city council am. Suny sayune ka damo ko de wa, suny policy priority singa hamne, nyun mom len am da na kada fa neka nyenint. Nyeninti na mu nyu sohal, te nyeninti, si lima wahyep, damo buga gen sen da, gis nyensisien bopa chili. Nyeninti nga hamne mom la itu de si, kune ka na halat ne wa, meyolifita ha wani yep. Dahli mengona ak mom, policy singa hamne, mom la wane moy priority policies. So bena be, moy inclusiveness. Inclusiveness, leaving no one behind. Bugu nyobai ken ganao, kune ka dey buga mu gis sa bopa, chi banjul, uh, uh, city council. Bobu is one of policies yo hamne, wat diga yala, nyunche dohbo ba haba, gam women, girls and youth empowerment. Bobo tamit, is another policy bohamne, suny, suny policy si la boka. Urban infrastructure development, bobo tamit benen la, bohamne, suny policy si la boka. And, uh, finally, na am garbage disposal be, bobo tamit, da fa boka si suny policy si. So da fa meni chi nyeninti la nyodoh, soba agon bu di ak beke, si la nyodoh, pur nyu, affect, si len sen bu tukiri. Gen am jamma, sen banjul am jamma, minute tamit, am jamma, suny domi, na handi nyonyo ele. Ngela di len de bayi, nyonyo, di len de halat nyonyo. Damade wa sayuneka ne, haris nehna, wahbu nehna, why baylen sen hel bu ba haba, haba, haba. Ne adu na bilege de fa gata, legi soha ame aidah ak omar ak demba. Ngani nyoneka sa dom, boyi ligaye, kholal chi nyonyo, ligaye, ligaye la nyonyo. Yo fatal sa bopa, melan nyoneku lofi, halat la nyonyo, te lulu, da ra dula komuna mey, council de fa wara contribute chi lulu. Paske bayo nyung fi, every day, mandama lum tuti tuti sumabi office be. Walahi, bu de twenty need la sah, damo kodiye gis. So ken gen ma ham problem be banjul, ku yam, ham lo problem be banjul, walahi, master la si. Ma koham, ma hamle nga hamne, moy chud ni ni, ma hamle nga hamne, moy meti ni ni, ma hamle nga hamne, mom len wara safara be banjul. Te suny he yala la len wa, suny he yala, afu yen tebe banjul, bin buga, walahi, dey ne ko am de yada sah. Again, ma am na, baneh, bu deyah bohamne, damo woho ne, dumukubinda si Facebook be. Uh, yala hamne ne, fa na, ma pi aru, bereka koham. Why damo kona dumoko wa, samja play de wa heko, utu mako, lakte oma ko. Fa na, ak aise twinyay ak binta, of course, ak sun chat bisanu. Uh, lakte oma ko, utu oma ko, halat oma ko, damato correct, US Embassy be, you name a message, email. Ga na be ngah ame ne ibi ne email be, nyunama rohimali glo, mane na, nyunama USAID, USAID. Uh, botay la bohamne, mu nyi America, chi botay, ma kinga hamne nyoneka America, nyomita mit fofo la. Nu de dey leadership program, nyunama nyom nyolatana, bole la si nyanga hamne, da nyuwaro dem America fukifan. Pur nyu jungle len, gen, uh, jokalan te ak nyenini, na hamne tanne ne nyunchiye ne deka itamit. Yo dey la tana, chi ngabo ka. Lulu sumanyo we ta how fi, di na kohamal wa banjul, di na thank the US Embassy, te di na thank USAID. Leadership bu bahna, leadership bu bah, nyun ne sabu dufu bo pa nde, why be male marik mu fu, ma fe te. Gis nga, tubabi, ken mu lena na, da ngah na African be ngah wane. Mom ga na, why tuba ken mu no konah, tuba balam la bolechi afira. Da fa fek mu gis kosi yo, mu gis kosi se delegee. Mu gis de you are transparent, mu gis de you are willing, am the vision, am the mission. Man na, damo fokne, paske yala bu nyutim hamne ne, lakte oma ko, dumata how fi, chi tele. The final American Embassy, te nyu ma deka, legi, legi ni, nyu ma deka, nyu mi toki ni, dima de glo. Dumato de len final, utu oma ko, lakte oma ko. Nyoma yoni email, nama, USAID, nyom nyola select. Ne dey buga ba boka sen leadership program be, kon na plon dam sere, mane len na, nyunama ndokeleku. Kon wa banjul, ye ne tamit ndokeleku, paske su du ton yen, so len ma electu ton, maneka false female mek. Walahi, dumoko lon am, dumado on to, pur neka, a coach here, at the Global Parliament of Mayors. Hamne nyata mayors, nyoneka at the Global Parliament of Mayors. Nyu ho rohimali glo, bobo tamit utu ma ko, the Mayor of Barcelona, and the Mayor of Washington. Ban ye ke some meeting badiko utu, nyomnyo ne Jacklen, len ko rohimali glo, Jacklen ko. Kon tey, maneka de coach here, executive member la fa one, why tey neka na fa coach here. And the Chair President, moy the Mayor of Banheim, the Mayor of Cots, mom moy smabos, Monica the, the Chair President. Nyunyowati, nyun ne African capital cities, nu den elections. Sayume koi wa, madewa ne ma, de gerem Senegal. Senegal na, awa sen fe, hamma kudeka da fa ne kilo ama Senegalisi, kilo ama Senegalisi. Kulararek, paske suny magisi, walahi si international be, nyoma dey dolen, nyota ma nyeme. Nyoma dey pouz, te fu matahou damo ko de wa, munuma fey halifa sala. Yala rekama ko fey al, momu ndika egal chi international, chi ko platform, ma jabari Nancy Mandela. Wa ho ma wini manse, wini Mandela de, benen jabarab, be fa na Mozambique la de ge. Momu ndika egal chi ko, uh, platform ma koku, kera damado on ti, damado on loh, be legi mil na ko. Legi mu ne nyangin, bay legi, legi ni, sumapara wuta, sumalu gis be plain, be mu na prepare smawa pa, madem ekwa. Kon kuku, fu matahou fokmo wa koni, jerege. Nu den na elections, mi gapa le ma, be maneka African Capital Cities Sustainability Forum, maneka chain, sen president, lulu tamit na me banjul. Maneka presidenti, Rafaela, National Chapter fee, nyun ne data, nyu enu nyu yo bu nyu, ne kayle nyu den Africa's elections. Sumay na tangwayi, taku be de ger, muy bintu kaba, ak aise twinyay. Nu den, inindamle, kontey, nyonge gena de lo wa, taku be de ger, ak di talas nyohay de nyan. Pur me, nyu amati, leafin bobu no no, andam bobu. Nyuneburet, last week, American Embassy be call ma, nama USAID, nyola identify, si leadership program be, lulu tamit mu nyu. Kon na man awa madala mu warawa, man lima war moy mandu, lima wara, lima war moy he hal banjul. Lima wara, lima war moy humble, lima war moy transparent, lima war moy bold, lima war moy di war dega. Lima war moy nemeku, sumay inja bot, lulu rekama war danao, lulu lenen, waroma. Kon wa banjul, sen meyobani, sen town hole ngini, di len war ne jere gen chef. Si sen nyon, di tock na fibe faga, di len hard, mep poku am noy lakte, nganla giri yala, damale nyan. Walahi lakte ko, dumoko je personal, te dumati mer, da fa magina dolen, da fa gena tah maham. Suma mistakes si film neka, da fa gena tah, nyanga hamne nyoneka chi muapi ni ni. Nan mom la, mom la, mom la, mom la, legi na dumom dumom mu joku, pur hamal ni ni, nyanga hamne moy dega. Kon na manle de wane jere gen chef, di tock di len hard, assalamualaikum warahmatullah.
Sadhipi status, rohilo regla ede fuf nuu. Manako wow, manako rohilo hamuma. Daanaka hamna sumagoro, hamna sumajeker. Wai man hamuma. Manako ne wai sojisi ema koe de fuf nuu. Nyunwa banyun, djegi banyun, denko indamo. Paske djige nbi lumb def, sideka bifini ekune banyun kesala. Denko warona hayanu, dikonda mo. Filajis, kune kusumaganaw. Munge nyogorla, mone wau. Ah nitki debalanga koe indamo. Fekamom, munge deflo hamantene moyolulu. Wai mane wasi telefon, mone wau. Nitki kohamantene ya konda mo. Teko kumunge ame, tumos bo hamantene. Mufayuk salary, lidjekati neka B C C. Koku kenwaru konda mo. Wai demoko uyuu. Falé oma konon la duge sumaker. Lo la la bo galake. Na lerakote samjak filaa. Wahbi samjak filaa wahbita mit. Filataha, manuasamjak la wahbinale.
Amna kalebogo butahawo koko anamo. Amna kubogo la like, yo wa nde gese. Ah yo yato danada.
Wa assalamualaikum. Sena gusantaya la tui sijin interview. Yegirim sunwajo. Digrim mey, bitamit si initiativim defni. De biago ninko buga, muni koan. So yegesantaya la, dimko debale, mohe unak. Yumna jafar lo mom. Ga hamne mojideli, ga hamne may banyu. Mune nyunahari, nyu bayfus mulatiyala ke. Kontenchi waranana. Mani moko bo galake, siyo bilang bo galake. Manango shilamey nyimeyobi si fidjaral. Mone dafa amon dosisarali ya hamne. Mone konsi formadi jimbi. Te siyo gini tombe, mone konsi lastri jimbi. Ga hamne, bo bo la mey diwahne. Dosisarani dafa amon fuf nuu. So yeguon, ke still now, siyo bo nuu, mone kasi systemambi. So den goona hamkusi yo, murefanyulera bo nuu, temi tahafi ni. Experinal wa banyu, komni mey rilef, de answer question si. Buganittemi lumi siyo bidefanyulu. Because of his part of that system. De ga hamne, lulumeyemawa, te lulue is part of corruption. Lulue is part of corruption. So shpekena mey diwahna lulue fidjaral, manango shilamey nyam. Amna stand side, asewa banyu, djilobanyu, yarobanyu. Bele gi deka banyu, warna la siyo di question bo nuu. Bele bitamit. Meyobi, mushua bo fara. Mushua anamo. Nyuha lelulu, ke beeluk, kua anamo. Wai amna de na time, ma amte fejefesungago. Nitkune karek, lim def, nanguloko. Ma call go, experinal go, nekoshun go. One week, three weeks, life is tall, muge off. Mudekluma, nyuwa standu yaga. Mano ne momdeyulu yebuka, munko kati, ne ga hamne moy. Moneka busy si, ga hamne more responsible. Munko kati, ne kora fa angwaya go yahu. Ma momdek di, over two hours, luluke hamuko. Ke ekbetet besitaydi ini. Konni nyoreja haseni, wai nyu. Bin bugarek, moye banyu budamkanam. Nyu bukun banyu budarugana ole. Banyu budamkanam, bin bugat. Te shun kisekwa hamna dafa digelubanak, dinan anamo. Kon mom to, nati five years. Wa na so many development zimdef, ne lulula achieve. Nangulene koko. Wai bitamit banyu sonana, so many development. Because of te so, wale banyu numelne, wuke. Nyu nyep hamne lul. Muge guruguruna kidab dige. Wai bitamit fast lim tau tau, yo koko do. Nyu yalarek linkum. Lu nyawa, yep, yalare, yalare sesetu. Diglu nyawa, yalabunyutim, te hamna lu nyawa. Nyu lu nyawa, denko regalmu. Besi nak, yagamke wane koko, pulla siyo gini. Digte dema forward, be meyri diwolulu. Manango shilamey nyimeyobi. Ne, lastri jimbi fi neko. Dafa amon corruption, bugan neko. Nyu dosisarani, wa nanga di gurek, nyu dosisarani. So nanga li di pita, question dere, kumudekoko wa. So siyo bilengbo, munge tahafi, yefanyulera siluru.
Wow, beni yeleli ambo lai. Nala di gata kudirek, ka kudira, kudira nyu mu na tonku.
Wa assalamualaikum bolomi. Mane nyu isama djige di fetro, yo agoni isama chamey. Ngahnu kiloma, amadala, luma koe laj. Ndache kanaw yala, tey. Yen enkeri te so, su duge. Munga wa sakani efsir. Manu kilolo rek, masallah. Di la wa dergesibo bo. Ndaxa apuyu, lo man, subuntu inkeri. Aguntu negi, masala, lulude fakelor, deka busy kanaw. Wai nasartaya la, be lulufunneka ni yala, tegina nyukon. Nyu ida nanka, nanka, rugi madulo, sogisi, nyu niti demba niya. Sogisi, manma to be eb, aknala, lumnehe. Ga hamne ki da majaro luban. Manu kilo de majaro luban de. Nyu nyogo kampanya, wai man, de masallah, masama imorumi. Bani, rugilo oru, nyu lumnyo wahan de, batek esintahawe. Kanambo bo la nyo gisika, kanamam. Manu kilo kuma nehla, ndaxluma wahan de, batek ilola, gisika namam. Nyu inyanak, shun kadiye di tahaw, yan neneyala mayda.
So ame, kenem ku ilajela, ne yofa wale nyo tonku. Wa one more question, mone mu na tonku. Ne kolep djige, ne kolep djige, ma amyada balance.
Disni la rahman rahim. Mani turu umifai. Mani diga afday. Do de fifty four kilo stak. Mey nyu la girem, de la santa. Mey disni chono wale dek. Motamuluma wa, te sumohal bitoy si mey, digdamo koe yere. Digirem nyo bita, digirem nyo hale, nyo nipineka, si kanaw. Digirem esni yaini. Mey disni ley di gey banyu. Kerbunneka banyu balipol, nyekirbanyu balipol. Lulu mu sida ambir banyu. Wahle luler, wahan nago afday, genago wasanjak. Mey lele yala, mey funbukuda, koko girem burlangko bain. Mey, man, ken hamewan U D P? Wai mey mo ini. Mey lagi hchani kide. Paske den gillo ini djige. Mey, billahi, wallahi, talahi, ki dunyoreke. Dinan huz dun godis, kune neki amut.
Wa gerjev. Yonme nyu nganyan, poru nyao. Lerak question yo yo. Yen kaleboli, nyu yena bayer. Dege, so tonto question, ye nyambige nyong. Wa nyadebe kononu dege.
Wow, adina dike si serjao. Um, serjao lakena mone forty million, bega hamne. Mom la iwa, na even forty seven million, sahivat. Na nyun denko fefeka, na suwa tuwa. Wai se, dinala hamelne, bu de de gerekane. Amna mufefeka, wai amna lo, hamne militer suwa tuwa. Refameli sumo haime. Di ma nguye set, refameli seven million, bobu yun suwa tu. Seven million bobu sila yo. Wai yu meli forty million bobu denko fefeka. Kon, lilala osi mu na tonku, nyunin boka nechi problem bi. Paske umbalene yen seven million, wai fekane falo mun forty million, nunla kuma na haime. Sa fingaye, mu wahlo hamne. Walla yaye, wo mokolage donsa. Konon dumachiduga, paske damade wale, hamne yena wahi. Jaruton, pudafnyo targal, te nyunene bugale. Paske kula ne, au ma bena bor. Kel dafa amnu mi giri, nyun nyundia doy na bor. Tei banyu city council. Bay fanye ke delegi, amu weh bo hamne. Musna nyoto, te fey funi, amut. Siyo banyu. Wai na, fokna guy dey jahle. Paske bor buset, nou gine toma bo es. Motamalere funene ni, dama amjot di genna, pur dakra toma. Paske damano pe won, te fokna nope bobu, denko di lewo lenne. Wai na, du purman, pur ni ni ham. Amu bena weh bo hamne. Bayu city council musna to, nyakka fey sarali, amut. Lenne yemunane. Damo konye, degluma muset. Lenne munaneka, weh bedena oni fos. Hegna sahalis, gotu loko, be oni tat, ma oni fort. Lulu da fey mu na am. Ku yu wahre, wahanali yada, te yada ka. Paske bu mu mokofito, ke di pessiri bambi, na ni mey ho la. Nitki so, wahanana, sedigate akayala. Yena yala, agi di gey la ana. Wai funene ni to, na bayu city council, tumon fey ya. Hegna denko di awale, aben council. Wai council di gendi, amut. Kon na safi, konka nade fi, go di gey. Hari nyu weh de to ma fi. Lulu, amut, musita am. Manako amut musita am, tenak, dafa amne la yo hamne, bulonu ni wahi. Dafa am, munga to, ga halatuti neli. Bosonaza, munaneka, damu taneka. Paske kula ne, au ma ben borchi, ben bank. Koku sumo da fey saralisa. Banki denko di cho. Bor buset banki yo, pur nyule balbanyu city council has. Ma hamalere lulute. Bor buset banki yo sumo office. Paske banki, kilen safmoi, kila hamne. Amu bena bor, bor buset million. Bor buset million ofanyu. Konshuto gela, pur nyu fey sarali. Hanada nyo, fugarbiya na bankre. Ne konya palenyu, nyu 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 yakantisa, pur dyapalenyu. Paske hanne ye, nyun denko mu na fey. Kanaw luluh. Ah, wali sar, de kanasa wa, gerjev. Wai lima la buga hamal moy, dibolobmen, ndanka ndanka ya. Nyun e, gonto gonto, diapa, buki, kau ma diapa bor. Wangale yena galay. De girem nyu yenge, wai banyu sonana, luba rey, baray, baray. Wai damala hamalme, dibolobmen, isetien. Yo wulho, nyu lengdef, dangan ho, fey kodi le, akfin ko ini. Lulu mo diha ho. Ne na la, bi nyonyo, fekui fi panamalit. Bi nyonyo, fekui fi moto mari. Bi nyonyo, de fekka ni ni, ni fey epunyari ju de, nyu yobule si etanza. Bi nyonyo, fekui fi ambulance. Bi nyonyo, bena ni fekka, bayu city council, di kofayal. Ah, felasi. Bayu city council te, di fey two hundred and something halay. Bi nyonyo, fekui ma seba, am abatuwa. Bi nyonyo, fekui kamai, ma sebi, am ai, dissensama, ni sampa yi renoveti. Hanakonak, wa di gey yala, kenem ku nyonak, after war he marigo, dinan am, eh gu takeoff. Koku dinamone ekatekum ba ba ba. Bu fekone, nyu bi nyonyo, de fekka abatuwa, ki ma sebi. Nu fekka, bayu city council, am isiti hor. Nu fekka, eh youth for excellence, bayu city council. Nu fekka ma sebi, am ai wana. Nu fekka ma sebi, am ai abatuwa. Nu fekka ni ni fey epunu bai. Nu fekka ni ni scolase. Wallahi, kononten, nyunita me, fey em, fale nyo doray, yudem. Wai, nyun banyu we, dafa am, banyo hamne, de fey jagasong. Yo yule nyun jagar, konsumacha me bo wali. Limala mu na wahre, dibolobmen behekno, sulu le chiyo. Tanka sahuni replengo. Wai dibolobmen, nunla gede me, koparunda wi, am, silurre, ne mu, mu ne, ligey. Dinyani yala, yala yonbalan, nyu kobe, mu na def, kupa, nyagamne, momne nyoda. Fokna lisides, wa na afere, go swakasi. Go swakasinak, wa kuma kofi diyara lekde, damo kua hafi. Dufi diyara lekla koe hele. Wa daku fi diyara, wa kofi, bu yeme mosro, dinak koe wa. Bu yeme tabakuro, dinak koe wa. Hanale, you very task force be, gis nenko. Amna yena yo hamne, smokofuge, wa saray yo fana. Dama farle, siyo duai mu mu fi, momdi la kuma na tonto bo pan. Wai, watamai, nde, njundia diyala wahle. Institute son, dafa waran, a proper structure. And the CEO should never, ever be bypassed in any decision of council. Dakchi waran boka. Wai luluh, nyun e, tonto ti gimi ni borong. Sayta, damo bu yedla, tonto bo pan. Assalamualaikum, yo harianek questions.
Assalamualaikum. Mane nyu, ye nyep, si kewa eden fitew. Un, ni dingi important, bega hamne, konaniteyi, kongo abanyu, yani yendun bali. Sakatuma, bega hamne, yebnola, nohweyemwa. Yegina, amna smobera bo la bu, bu like the question. So mu la bu, yegina enlightening. Mane gisne, bi more like the question bi, how mo bafso ni la, because man go so gis. Ah mane gisne, mu kolaite, komme na kiko hamne, how mo la, wai, dinala tonku. Deba, man mane kobe B C C, come see you. Tei, sume, we tole fitlen, wahim, de fiyep. Te tey, genanku, tida lo, deko bugalego. Kan mo kodi muremulefko. Sumo office la. Mano ma kosi mure. If it goes worka bi, la mane si bo la enlightening to di. Bu nyu understand. Because task force be, dey are definition di, de defne koba. Kom aywa banyu, kunyu, di sama, interesti wa banyu. A defa, mey ne misunderstanding wa, mey, has unis been on. Moi, shibidi, sune goes worka. Moi worka yo hamne, existi. Ne kune, ken hamut leni. Wai, denyende fey gulo ti institution bi. Gena, ena nyu amni kodi fey nyomin. Ni koi fey gu, aknyu hamne, nyu nyoto bihar, kunyodense analysis. Nunle understand di goes workas. Ena man, terminology, dituwa video, terminology. Da fey, isinere, ney weyante. Wai, wa nontanega weyante, paske lulue, lila kodi B C C, du goes workas timan. Te diha kowa, lutah, moi. Ni fanek, te mane wa fu neka ti mede, ni nyamadega. Falé oma kume, falé oma kumo go teglu, manama wahre. Paske man ta, domi banyu la. Suma mani, aksumo paba ibi banyu, fi de, fi de, so bali. So man dumani, ove tey neka sen si, o sen dom, di jahan ne banyu. Wai banyu, ni kote lo gana, moi ni fananega mey o B C C, ma kowa. Man ma kowa, te kuma si bo a chere. Hotel pechobanyu nyoto. Man di na fo wangwa, ni takto be wa banyu. Sogisi, ki, bi more to, kukebe. Man si me savala, oro ma bugasi pono di. I shogisi, more to, tahaw, be buga di gey, bu nyu. Because hamna di geyi, nyun gambensi, omin afrika, si hamu tole di gey, olanda di gey mu nef. Lulu mo si problem. Senun, New Zealand, ti time, uh, covid. Panu isanila la. Di gey la. Be, amna siyeto, di na unusla, ni handule, uh, livi di. Nyu nyode, nyewa di gey, fi nyu le onut. Wa addressi onu di gey. Wada more to, mane man kila support. Wa koko opun di, no bo koko. Wai bi nyu, legi a broken light. Paske lima kowa he, ni wote lo, council kanaw. Mo mu kisuko, moi tima, nyanti ma di manal. Watate, nyu tahafi, di limi wa fiye. Kan mo kova si di. Mano man, nyosunye, mane, no, bu mane fi, lima, no, di mu la tus. Wai luluh tahu mu neka fa. Te li ta, more ne kodi B C C be. Mo bi nyu, amon aten, desma to de, smama banyu. Wada more toksani, ni nyaka fa yada. Paske banyu city council, man mo fanduwa ninety nine. De ga towa, levi ni kolente, kunyio fey hasi, di council bi, man, sumo da. De gendan towa, amna bele, levi nyu endeyama jo. A very, very valuable banyu ya, ni don di gey, di council bi. Ni ma wa council, uh, kanine kons council, hamne ni ma wa. Man yo, man yo, man lai sumo to di lai se. Te man te ma interview ministri, joma jobi. Wai, madembe di se jobi, is very political. Disson good, janu, anti A P A siga. Disson janu, wa, N I T, la, ni na, te, nyadu la, dey na, nyu wati. Wai luluh tahu, mu ne, du ma dau. Be ala nyu, si mati bile, legi mu mu le, wa banyu. Hamke kodi, paske ti bile. Sogisi, nyu tahate, yu wa, te, yu wa, yep, city development. Geno shuan de, mayo si bi. Paske man ta, more, sumo ta, koba diya. Sumo toke, ma sumo ma, ma sumo sebe gayan, de banyu. Hey, asbi, nyu ma ne koba di. Sumo bo, wa, amala, be, nyu ma ne koba, to banyu, dey, agame. Man dumawa, nyu na, li li yangu, te tomo fogo na. Idaleo banyu, city council na. Walimwa, bechubanyu, sasola goe, man, dinan nyo ma tau. Nyafa neko, nyato, nyu wahwa e banyu. Nga set, oditi bo, daman B C C, oditi bo, momi. Amu bet, oditi bo, ba, de la, one, bati di, di bo, ba, konshyo, mojeli. De la wa, ne system bi, the system, eh, na kobe, ma, te, ne machi, transfer in ma, titel ne ma, mu neko. Because of man, bi wa no B C C, nyu wa fokondu. Nyu wa fokondu, man kuma aman, ma, ma di yo, masu duya. Wai, manu we, ma gisne film, ki meti. Sai ma de na wa, sumo bo ba, mu na, eh, nomu na, bu dau. Ne kava, mu na, one, le, li ngamu, li ngamu. Revenue bi, nyu, bayu city council. De ma wa, ni kati, tre mu fe. De mu fe, nyu revenue. Nyoko ndeka, ekati B C C, nyu bo es, be nyu oye al qaida. Nyu, kati, me mo, ni mu ni, nyoko ekati. Beni nyu, gisne, pete safin ko ekati one, ha yu tonto. Wai, chi bilu, ni kuma nef. Ne kava, beni nyu, nyu watanan nyu, gisne ni, chere nyu pu ligey, moi diga. Ni ni sonen di de, damen na de lo. Sogisi, tey, ni lewa, gisna bi mani gey nyu. Daman nyu gale, ma, ma to, mey, ma lele nde di. Ki mu mu shindi, te, ye ni na kota, bi nyu, ye ni na kosa, ni kada, mu nu to. Mu nuwa to, to, bu, ma, momi, neka, ni na, kan, moi kan. Man mu, yare, mu nu. Man yare, akula ame, more da bi nyu, ma de to gi fey. Lulu pu chere, buganere, daman respect ni. Paske nyu ta te, bi bi banyu, ma, mu na si. Nyu ta te, bi banyu, te. Chi bidhi, ena ni ni shun bi. Ilaha, esamabu ele, ni nyu aginadi, wa ni ni shibi di. Nyu hamne luluh, wai, nyu luluh tamit, topato ululu. Ni nyu topato, ome, le, hamne, mu nyu yebuka. So man ma la, inge, yasai mom, oh, yasai grupyo hamne, dey ni boha, temaliho B C C. Kalian mu fa, du ma gela na, man di koha de. Paske man di se hera. Jobi ma leka, jobi se hera, du ma koe de. Wai, besbole, oti bechubanyu. Ye na hamamse, boha le, ye na hamamse, harile. Billahi, kela di ne, dey la, hamne wa banyu, si ko mu na mu na di. De u na fi. De u na fi. Lulu mu, ah, more to, de mey, bu nyu, buka, isit, uh, hundred workers, ni le gey B C C. Mo mu sawa, bechilu, mu shu. So, de, be ngani, si koga, la, ni, la, anti A P A siga. Eh, la la, she mu shu yake. Tamata, 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 be sumo poba di. Paske nyu yofa neko. Mey, bu nyu, mo, tegula ki, nyo, la, wa, ife, local government service. Kon more ne, ni, generation bi, understanding ne. Don't jan ne, di, le, tokke B C C. Nyu le bo, man, manal bo, this match, wa gai moi. Ne ne, nyu toga B C C, to, ben, merit. Nyu nyoni interview le, nyu gisne, nyu nyu mu ligey, bi le, nyu mu, na, nyu nyu ligey. Wai luluh na, ku sumo koa. Mo fadu ge, bi ni nyu we. Yala, pahe, enta, local government service, komso bita. De legi koa, mey, great six oposla. Pahe la employee, funga de fuf. Amo kono koku, lo, wahbele. Du fi worka, worka problemi, yo de la wa. Kune kaso ni, limi B C C, asa, sayni. Kenes nyu we, tapas nu, isiyeti, ke, nyu, ayi. Takale, nyu bo ka, me kwa di, wa fush. B C C, amu aten, man, man, dadi. Farane, be, four years ago, stop. Bi, 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 suwa, dadi. Man, kela rey, the whole B C C. Damabina rey, damabina report, damadempe, damadempe, le, 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 ma fey sahi. So, so kua le, sahaya, wa, de, de, possible. Wai ma koe, di, di, banyu. Paske shogisi, te, admusi. B C C, tanamamit, eh, ke. B C C, tanamamit, eh, president. B C C, tanamamit, eh, president. Lulu mo te di gey. Ak, nu ne, unel, unel, chineka, amta misa, la kua di, di goeswa banyu. So, ti, luluh. Manla. Ke ra bo, te na, am, more questions, so answer. Sumo office, office of the CEO busy. Man, omu protokol, omu nyu, na, daman nyu, si ko, mu ne di se, dinala by experts. Lo bo ha, 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 kobe na.
Wa gerjev siyo, wa gerak lena. Film nekani, ne, di question le nyo am. Samba jaw. Sukode febu, samba jaw, dewe, yaya kuya te, ne kware bary, di gesi. Abla isware, adbi ridya. Mi yengeke, di samba jaw, wai, mu fehre, be tenka question, zepa bu di film nekani.
Wa assalamualaikum. Mane nyu, okusineka, satu, accessanta. Digital sumanuorek, uh, si mey rasbi, di rugi mari lu. Di wahre, ne, diga diga, luwa diga re. Amna question, yo bari, yo koko bo la laj. Wai, tru mu toke, asana yo bari, so yo yene si se, tru mu laj. So man, swataha wa, fitey. Ne kune, daman yo, fitna, pulje ma, eda sobata, o, waso, eva not. No. Paske, sume, rasbi tey. So, wasi, e, e, akoli tuwa. So, funa fa, nyu girek, kosi, uh, akire, edithwe, nyu hamne, akjendisun, de, civil council. So, funi di, kosi, koko ra. Paske man ma mu, du tey, ma te wa hamne, owi, ne bala, ma, la, di na wa, to, di re, okemla, understand. Man, musma leka U D P. Wai, because of mo, mo ta, ma, sale, katal, ona U D P, ta, wo kote school, wey, arats, electione. Four years back, so, wai, dama sumo ra, si, uh, wa, yere, yere, ni, wai, da, kuka, era, simidiya, la, ta, di diwa. Musma sale, U D P, kana. Wai, because of mo, mo ta, ma, sale. Wai, amna few question, yo hamne, be na, di la, go go sale, go step, amut. Sumo, be yere di, be, 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 asana go. So, swa, 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 more like a. Amna yeme, question, asana go, wai, te wa, la, di, be, question be. If, mane yu, wo de. Okay, question, be more like a. Da, munge, in a good way, so si, with the councilors. So, because, amaya, after, through my observation. The last weekend, at the, uh, money, usma, post, people, market. Wai, daman is, a very few councilors. So, sumo councilor, si, yo, unfold. So, I don't know what is the problem, whether, guy, he in good position, or, I don't know, what is going on, so, do not down cry, fire, here. So, come there, as, there you.
Yere, samba, yaya, yaya kuya te. Abla isware, na pare pare, gao, na, bu dinan.
Assalamualaikum bolomi. Manla yaya, kya di banyu, sar. Manu wa, ame, ruwa, he, moi. Advice mane, man kodiwa, banyu. Please, ru amni meli, te fe na. Alim by side talks. Kaila, gera silen, ne nyon like the questions. Paske banyu, mu ni so has. Please, suli ame, gera silen. Mey, bangini, elabre, te, yep, dau, titu, raga. Legi, si nyulades. Ku am lo la ke nyu wa ngala ke Ma te mo mu kora la ke Tu tu na kwa Tomo la koli na luha hamne Te sa ma kolo nisposte Smosiliyo Te yaha na ma luha hamne Mo Watana Se mo biaga Wa te Ma ebu deka ne mi ne Lo de kofa feka Mo EU project So buka na mu ne msi ailera Depare ma kola ta mi Krabale mi ta mi falasi toru Depare Ma la kota mi Come Badi ulambe And hamdulillah masala Badi ulena Wa anna plasi ta mi tesna So ma kola Lu kuwa
Wa here Jeff yaj Abla isuare Mu gao tuji biri yaj na pare pare Ah nee thank you question si So pare fe ma mu koto tu na bu dinan
Assalamualaikum Wa wala Ah unge la ni ye My little advice Ah man musma question si Ona de first question di I'm not smart na ta go college I mean Ah concerning about CEO di Eh To my own understanding Ah with your respect Mr CEO I'm not satisfied with the answer But Ah then Bu kuma keep mayor resbi Because yage na ta ha ta bit So Edna mta ha yage bekomu Wa ebu anna a few questions Sumo buka la Montusi wa ham Ah dega na yage wa afeli Degha hamne mo moi Ah no Stasi in badi Ah si Fi jaga anna kula lachi Ah lu 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 Yage yebe komsi degha hamne mo moi Eh Local government arbi Ne Suma ju meyera Ma iti ma Ne Counsel di Come like Om Yage na tole wa hamne Mu na stop Stasi So nunu amma ha wa Yaha tro Asa counsel Funa ne tamit Amin Liye amin ye aman Ye si wa hamne tamit Atis De eko De eko muna Stop Because Nu gi fi mu yo Understand from the resident Act and former commercial area So mu ne tro Wi ta mi Ela ni si lu Si sumasi konquestion ni mo Sabir wa yage Yage ta fa Nila hamne mo moi ah Toilet Se gear Massed Si kanav Si massed si kanav So toilet si di lu Anno si wa hamne function That even Because almost three years Suma ju meyera Three years Annan e na toilet Tu teka si kanav Ibi unko Beli we te Anna ni wa hamne fori hasi mu fa De You participate For the na fu Nonu The na fa program Disna toilet kuwa ni mo Ah saki na bi na Unko ta fe lu Bahaa 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 Wa e Ah benen suma benen question bi Moi eh Ah town Bi Da Ta ni si pare la Pare koro na se kontam Or not Buka ne si ha Lu lu Tamit Ta tamit Langa Divolo de si yage badi Lu lu Yage divolo ne Ta mu ku badi Da munga yo ni man Feel Yo hamne Yo lu lu Ve badi Chilin Anna la We like question Imo anna fa So don't forget We don't have time I'm not time Sa ma neka kuwa I have another question for Mr My brother Ah Aladya Concerning about cleaning sense Konaya ame di badi Bo bo la Malisi akirino Disne a very malisi Ah First of all Ni kora ke Bu bahaa bahaa Time to time Malisi no I'll let you to Ah si kanav ma sebi Probiye gi La muna se yage wasi lu lu Anta ga yo Yage amin Wa utility service before So buka ne kuila Gaye olu Wa
Here Jeff Mr Sware Here Jeff Ni lea o biri Ni le na kenyo Hamna program di Bu ni sanon mu nebe buze Wa ebi ni bu komu Ke mo mi kiri fale Ke ni ni liye tiro na tamit Benko se ta mu tokli ba fajan Na hulue anna dorin Li ke we na la Bu neka anna kokoko wa Anna danja danja Biri yage yon Te pa mi ke Ante pa mi ke Anta wa hamne Bu ye herek Yo kuwa yage Jigisata mi ka hamne luha mu Me Biri yage ge sil Biri yon yon Anna biri Ah biri mo bi duon Konfinene kani nyume Lo me Buton to Question si ka hamne Mu la ka ni tiro Wa te Bi ba fajan Ni ne pa mi bi ye
Ah isat hana ni sache rek Um here Jeff Um Funa Dina jeke si Yaya kuyate Yaya kuyate Moi la chi afeli EU project bi Yaya purhamala regne EU project bi Funa application bobe Ma koro de sa Sumasi man CEO Ma kuma sani Akma me la ejiase Ke ye bu De koli gaye be nyon Madorko yala sa councilasi Ke na Funa fe Bu neka badi na sele Watana ni ne we In a digital world now So ba eh help Si documentary bi Du yage documentary Ri gaye kusmi play Si different Um networks Anna so EU bisi bo pan Prokna explain ma mom Nakalendore Be EU project movie So lema lepo ye ga mo yaya Of course EU project bi Nyoko in the bill badi Ken Indi wo ko Ken bo kuti And the good thing about it Moi eh EU Badi as a local Um ah Badi city council As a Local institution Moi the first institution wa hamne EU John Mahalis Call EU project bi Ken mu su ko he into sa De koli gaye be nyon Madorko yobo Wa ko councilasi Wa ebi ne begi Dis bo kusi So sete documentary bi Li le yaha hal ye Mu faten ke ba Mu dauti netwoxy Bu bahaa 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 Degana Ah Samba jaw mu ne Um Lulla wa Mu ne Samba jaw dega na mu ne Hamga da fa wa ni li gaye ina De de sumachi ame Gi samba jaw Wo kuwa redde Evidence isla wane Da ma wane town hall bi Is tangible is there Puni gisco Ta You for excellence bi Mu fa dida for this Krabale and project bi Mu fa denko is Abatuwa bi Mu fa le yo gisla Sarale yo kalini Mu fa le yo gisla So ne ku loha hamne Da ma kuwa redde Inventum adara Development si na hamne Is tangible Yo ebe tofi Dekoa So again Yaya kuyate la tena Mu ne krabale na How long la wa regen Um krabale na If I'm right Kati funa ten months La wa regen Nu ge expect November na October Inshallah November si la wa regen So lampa itan Komu ma kuwa eh Ah anna ye ne lampa Ni nyongu fune ke ni So funa Tuesday or Wednesday Na we kela nyoha Because nyonya ame moto Bi ka hamne moi ega tiro De egi si ni dia loa Si bi badi Di Ega la lambe Sumachi ame bi Abdullah isuare Mom defene Liquidiya hal moi Luta council Adwa le council Ye bu nu ta stop stasi Ma buka la hamne Abdullahi Council amut autonomy Autonomy moi eh Independent Purmu na def likoniya Wa na ne Meyo bi suwa Re de tu ki sa Da kuwa re ja Si ministari Purmu am clarens Ke na Funa da ne ku to Di dega lewa Wa na ne constitution bi Mom la physical planning Di use Purmu repamit And no da fu super see The local government act Kon ege Ma wa hadla ne Badi city council Mu nu ta ga ne Pamit Purmu samba Wa ebu mu neko ayeh Mi mu samba Paski niya ko jo Pamit Ni ne liye pa mi Bu ni samba Nu ne constitution bi More len dolen The constitution bi More ndei Local government act Bi ka hamne Fu flameobi We Na wa afeli Wa na ki Ne ne akna be na Wa la buha hamne Niye ti at Da nyar at Don't Lu lu sa moi diga Ni na wa moi diga Wa ebu na Ni ma lu kuwa wa moi eh Wa na buka An teknikal si bufa yaka Wa ebu funa sole me Fu fu In the next one week or two weeks De egi disne lo ri chinya Lehe on moye number one De kuwa re inaugurate Because the Chinese embassy Mo kuwa sampu from the ground up Yala defna Covid bi yo Te nyong sen policies moi Si ni de bela chi dara De ewa re yo Inaugurate Kabala mu ro Purmu function Number two Binen wa he sana Nyong because of covid bi Better than you by Nyu 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 ibiko Nu disne Ah wa na bi Yep denku electrify So wa na bi so flose Toy Ah Ah kurang Mo de yo bulu neka chi bi Ah wa na bi So fu fu Amuton Ah kurang Bu mu na connect Mu nechi wa na bi Wa ebu ta iso fa de luwa te And I please want you to go back there